Opposedly, I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, September the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty. And we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Maury, you need to unmute. Is that it? Did we miss it?
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please conduct a voice rule call, and councilors, please signify by stating your name and answering present or aye, following the clerk's reading of your name, so that we have a clear record of who is in attendance. Madam Clerk?
Councilor Adamson.
Councilor Adamson, present.
Councilor Anay.
Councilor Anay, present.
Councilor Bain.
Councilor Bain, present.
Councilor Barth.
Councilor Barth, present.
Councilor Boots. Councilor Brown.
Councilor Brown, present.
Councilor Carlino.
Councilor Carlino, present.
Councilor Dilk.
Councilor Dilk, present.
Councilor Ethan Evans. Council, Council Jared Evans.
Council Jared Evans, present.
Council Graves.
Council Graves, present.
Council Gray.
Council Gray, present.
Council Hart.
Councilor Hart, present.
Council Jackson.
I'm present.
Council Jones.
Council Jones, present.
Council Larison.
Councilor Larison, present.
Council Lewis.
Council Lewis, present.
Council Maskary.
Councilor Maskary, present.
Council McCormick.
Council McCormick, present.
Council Maury.
Council Maury, present.
Council Oliver. Council Potts, I'm sorry, Council Osalee.
Council Osalee, present.
Council Potts.
Councilor Potts, present.
Council Ray.
Council Ray, present.
Council Robinson.
Council Robinson, present.
Thank you, Mr. President. All councilors are present. We only heard from twenty-four. I believe, Mr. Council Oliver needs to upload his audio or turn on his audio.
Clerk, we have no guests this evening, so we will proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is official communications. Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the public, in the City County Building, in the Council Chambers on Monday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers two forty-eight, two forty-nine, and two fifty-five, two thousand and twenty, said hearing to be held Monday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following, following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number fifteen, general ordinance number thirty-seven, special ordinance number six, general resolutions numbers twenty through twenty-two. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for September the fourteenth and sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
We have, this evening, so the next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two eighty-five, introduced by Council Maskary, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposes a resolution of the Marion County Local Income Tax Council to request approval from the Department of Local Government, of Local Government Finance, to lower the levy freeze tax rate and to cast the vote of the City County Council on such resolution. Proposal number two eighty-six, introduced by Council Maskary, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposes, proposes an ordinance to the Marion County Local Income Tax Council to one, modify the local income tax rate, two, modify the allocation of previously imposed expenditure rate, expenditure rate, excuse me, and three, determine how the revenue from the property tax relief rate shall be applied to provide property tax credits in subsequent years and to cast the vote of the City County Council on such resolution. Proposal number two eighty-seven, introduced by Councilor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, approves an additional appropriation totaling five million, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Indianapolis Fire Department, City Federal Brunt's Fund in characters one, two, three, and four, for the purpose of funding the purchase of personal protective equipment, the replacement of cardiac monitors, and expenses incurred during the deployments of Indiana Task Force One as part of the National Urban Search and Rescue Response System, System Response Cooperative Agreement. Proposal number two twenty-eight, introduced by Council Adamson, referred to the Public Works Committee, approves a transfer of two million, eight hundred thousand dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Department of Public Works, Consolidated County General Fund, Fleet Services Subfund, reducing two million, seven thousand dollars in character two and seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in character four and increasing character three to fund contractual needs for the repair and maintenance of cities, of the city's fleets. Proposal number two eighty-nine, introduced by Council Jared Evans, referred to the Public Works Committee, authorizes intersection patrols at Bertha Street and Allison Court in District twenty-two. Proposal number two ninety, introduced by Council Anay, referred to the Public Works Committee, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Castle Classic View subdivision in District twenty-three. Proposal number two ninety-one, introduced by Council Hart, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, adds chapter six, six oh two, charitable distribution of goods to the revised code. Proposal number two ninety-eight, introduced by Council Maskary, introduced, I mean, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, authorizes the city controller to offer an elective retirement program for the city, for city and county employees, including those employed by the Marion County, I mean, the Marion Circuit Court and the Marion Superior Court. Proposal number two ninety-nine, introduced by Council Osalee, referred to the Education Committee, appoint Leon A. Jackson to the Indianapolis Charter School Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business. Proposal number two ninety-two, two thousand and twenty, and proposal numbers two ninety-three through two ninety-seven, two thousand and twenty, are all rezoning ordinances certified by the Metropolitan Development Commission to the council for adoption. If no one wishes to call down any of these cases for a public hearing, they will pass into law. Mr.
Mr. President, I would like to, I would move proposal two ninety-three, two thousand and twenty, rezoning case, two thousand and twenty dash Z O N dash zero four five, be scheduled for a hearing before this council. It's next regular meeting on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM. And the general council read the announcement of such hearing and enter the same in the minutes of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote?
Councilor Adamson.
Aye.
Council Anay.
Anay, aye.
Council Bain.
Council Bain, aye.
Council Barth.
Council Barth, aye.
Council Boots.
Council Boots, aye.
Council Brown.
Council Brown, aye.
Council Carlino.
Council Carlino, aye.
Council Dilk.
Council Dilk, aye.
Council Ethan Evans. Council Jared Evans.
Council Jared Evans, aye.
Council Graves.
Council Graves, aye.
Council Gray.
Council Gray, aye.
Council Hart.
Council Hart, aye.
Council Jackson.
Council Jackson, aye.
Council Jones.
Council Jones, aye.
Council Larison.
Council Larison, aye.
Council Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Council Maskary.
Council Maskary, aye.
Council McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Council Maury.
Council Maury, aye.
Council Oliver.
Council Oliver, District Nine, present, aye.
Council Osalee.
Senator Osalee, aye.
Council Potts.
Council Potts, aye.
Council Ray.
Council Ray, aye.
Council Robinson.
Council Robinson, aye.
Council Ethan Evans. Mr. President, that is twenty-four zero.
Thank you. I'll call on General Counsel Kim to read the announcement of public hearing. Counsel Kim?
Thank you, Mr. President. This council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition number two thousand and twenty, Z O N, zero four five, council proposal number two ninety-three, two thousand and twenty, at its next regular meeting on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Such meeting to convene at seven PM in these council chambers in the City County Building in Indianapolis. This petition proposes to rezone ninety-eight acres from the DA District to the D four District, located at ten thousand and ten thousand fifty Indian Creek Road and ten thousand three twenty-seven East Edgewood Avenue in Franklin Township, District twenty-five. Written objections that are followed with the clerk of the council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued from time to time as found necessary by the council. This concludes the announcement, Mr. President.
Proposal number two ninety-three, two thousand and twenty is set for public hearing. If no one wishes to call any of the other rezoning cases down for a public hearing, they will pass into law. Very good. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. Is our practice to take public testimony on all of the proposed budget ordinances at the last meeting before passage of the budget, which for two thousand and twenty is slated for October the twelfth. If you have not yet signed up to give testimony, please do so at this time. Please note that each individual is allowed two minutes to speak to any of the budget proposals on tonight's agenda for public testimony. Please be respectful of everyone's time and wrap up your comments when you hear the buzzer. The clerk will also read into the minutes any comments that have been received online through our public testimony portal, which will also be subject to the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, would you now please read the digest of those budget proposals for which testimony will be allowed this evening? And then begin with any public comments received online. Two minutes per comment, and please prioritize Marion County residents. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two thirty-two, approves the tax levy and rate of the Police Special Service District for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two thirty-three, approves the tax levy rate, the tax levy and rate for the Fire Special Service District Board two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two thirty-four, approves the tax levy rate, tax levy and rate for the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two thirty-five, adopts the annual budget for the city of Indianapolis and Marion County for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Airport Authority and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-one, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-two, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Health, Health and Hospital Corporation and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-three, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-four, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Transportation Corporation, Indigo, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. President, you would like me to continue with comments that were submitted online?
Yes, please.
Okay. Please bear with me, with me. We do have several comments.
And let us make sure that we remember two minutes per comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alina Jones stated, "I'm writing to request that the City County Council financially demonstrate their commitment to equitable and safe communities by investing in the community programs and voting against budget, budget increases for IMPD as a minimum first step to remaining, to reimaging public safety in Indianapolis." Corey, Colleen Nguyen stated, "We need to defund IMPD. We need to stop recruiting and hiring officers, transfer MCAT to healthcare organizations without IMPD officers on the teams, and to find cost saving through an independent financial audit. The current proposal includes twenty-nine percent of our total budget and a seven million dollar increase over last year's budget. That money would be much better used on other city services that will benefit all of the residents of Indianapolis. This is in District twenty-four. Audrey Broadus, Kristen Swanson, Peter Silva, Brittany Rude, and Kayla Lawson all stated, "Defund IMPD, stop recruiting and hiring more cops, transfer MCAT to a healthcare administration without IMPD officers on the teams, find cost savings through independent financial audit." Lynn Young stated, "Reduce IMPD budget and redirect funds to the community via housing and social services. Police should not take up thirty percent of funds exclusively." Sarah Batista stated, "I live in Indianapolis, District Seventeen, and I strongly oppose any increase in funding for IMPD. There should be a goal of reducing their funding by at least five percent every year and a shifting of money to other services that will actually increase public safety. Policing is an ineffective way to increase public safety, and IMPD should not be involved with many of the things they get dispatched for. Look to Denver's programs that does not send, that doesn't send police to mental health emergencies. It starts with bucking the trend of always giving the police more, more and more money. Decrease their budget by five percent. There are plenty of much-needed services and programs that could be, that could use the money instead. Start there." Jaclyn Sweetheart stated, "Defund IMPD." Lisa Coleman stated, "IMP, IMPD budget increase request. I live in zip code four six two one nine. I am asking that the City County Council denies the IMPD budget increase request of seven million dollars for a total, for a total budget of two hundred six, sixty-one million dollars. This accounts for nearly thirty, thirty percent of the city's entire budget. The lack of transparency in IMPD operates deeply concerns me with, as a constituent and a taxpayer, before approving any policy and independent financial audit should be conducted and to find and share with all constituents." Laura Renderneck stated, "I am writing as a constituent and resident to encourage you not increase the IMPD budget, but instead use the money to actually care for the residents of Indianapolis by investing in housing, healthcare, education, and mental health services. We do not need more money spent on police. They do not make, make us safe." Brian, Brian Carmine stated, "I am a voter living in Indianapolis, four six two oh three. Stop recruiting and hiring more officers, transfer MCAT to healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team, find cost savings through an independent financial audit, use funds diverted from IMPD to pay for non, non-policing forms of public safety and community support such as social services, youth services, housing, education, healthcare, and other community resources." Mary Leachey stated, "I am in favor of an independent financial audit regarding the police force. I also feel very strongly that we need a funded mental health group without police presence to respond to mental health needs in the city. As a former psychiatric nurse here in Indy, now retired, I can say that informed individuals without guns are a better solution. I also believe that policing is not as much about numbers as it is about building trust and improving policy. I have no doubt that IMPD would love to feel that trust and respect again. Robin Long Jordan stated, "Can we redirect some of this money to mental health services?" Dell Winkler stated, "Indianapolis should transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization and not involve IMPD. I am a constituent in zip code four six two two zero." Edwin Lewis, Lewis Jones stated, "I agree with Indy surge. Funds intended for police new hires should instead be directed to youth organizations in our community. Invest in the future, not the status quo." Josh Bam, Bam Biver, sorry, IMPD is asking for two hundred sixty-one million dollars or twenty-nine percent of the city's, city's budget. Indianapolis needs to divest in the police and invest in our neighborhoods and communities. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops, transfer MCAT to healthcare organizations without IMPD officers on the team, find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Haley Tinsley, "Do not increase the IMPD budget. As a community, we need to focus on defunding IMPD and reallocating their resources into community programs. Community programs to help the homeless find food, housing, and jobs. Social workers should address problems within the community like mental, like the mentally ill. Too often, people that are mentally ill are killed or shot by the police for acting like someone that is mentally ill. IMPD is asking for almost a third of the city's budget and a city riddle with potholes and homelessness. Increasing policing does not bring down crime and does not bring down homelessness. Police brutality is one, is on the rise, and an increase to policing will only worsen the problem. We have an abundance of problems throughout our city, throughout our community, and the police are not a fix-all Band-Aid. We need, we need real solutions. We do not need to add a person with a gun to all of our problems. We need a real mental health, we, we need real mental healthcare. We need to care for the homeless and help them build new lives. Our solution to every problem cannot be an increase of policing in jail. Studies show that rehabilitation is the best opportunity for these people. Cops are not social workers, and we need to stop treating them as such. The people that are protesting do not want to see Indianapolis burn. They want to see it improve. They want it to be a safe place for everyone. They, if they were black, white, Latino, disabled, mentally ill, or poor. We want all of our citizens to be protected and served equally. With the reallocation of IMPD funds, we could serve all of the underfunded parts of Indianapolis, and investing in education, rehabilitation, and solutions to homeless, homelessness will bring crime rates down. We need to put our community first." Melanie, I'm sorry, Madeleine Schwartz stated, "Do not grant IMPD a seven million dollar increase in their budget. I am an Indianapolis resident in zip code four six two two zero and in, and a school social worker at an IMP, IPS elementary school. We are preparing to go back to in-person school without any real plan to keep students socially distanced in the classrooms. Even before COVID, our students are without books and technology, and they need to excel in their education. We are told this is because there's not enough money in the budget. The city just can't afford it. Instead of increasing the IMPD budget for more vehicles, equipment, and recruits, invest that money in our community, invested in allowing schools to safely return to in-person learning during COVID and many other desperate needs in our communities. Stop recruiting and hiring more officers. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD on the team." Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD on the team. And find cost-saving measures through an independent financial audit. Franklin Oliver stated, I lived in Indianapolis for thirty-six to forty-six years of my forty-six years. There's never been a single day the police here have made me more safe than threatened. I wish that were not true. Defunding IMPD should not just be a financial goal. It should be a more moral priority for all who represent the cities. The citizens of Indianapolis. We have a no-mean city. Let's be exceptional in this regard too. Shay Orin Lekther states, the council needs to divest. From police and invest money in our community. I have lived in Indianapolis my whole life and I know that the city can be amazing. But as long as the police who are literally murdering our black citizens continue to take a large chunk of the budget. While, while our communities suffer, we are held back. Please divest from. The IMPD budget and put the money in our communities where it can actually make a difference. Michelle O'Connor, Michelle O'Connor states. I'm a Marion County resident in zip code four-six-two-oh-five. I am calling on. City council to reduce the IMPD budget, not increase it. Increasing policing will not improve life for the citizens of our community. We need, what we need is more money going into the health, into health services and social services. Indianapolis already has a low level of, low level of violent crime. And where people are struggling is with food, shelter, and healthcare, especially among our, our minority citizens. Body cameras and shiny weapons can never resolve these problems. We must invest in the systems that build people up rather than tearing them down and locking them in cages. Every food bank I volunteered at is near overwhelmed with demand. Eventually evictions will, will proceed and turn thousands out into the street, onto the street. We are failing to protect the most vulnerable among us. We must step up and invest in programs, in social programs for the good of all humanity. Which is currently facing more than one crisis. Let's be creative and try a new way forward. Where we can come together for a common good, where we can care about solving the root causes of crime and poverty. Instead of placing blame on the victims and trying to lock them out of our sight. Landon Cotwell states, I am, I'm from zip code four-six-two-one-nine. Giving, given the police, twenty-nine percent of our city's budget is a slap in the face. To all the poor children living hungry lives in food deserts. Think this should be where the homeless sleeping coat on the street. All the families with rundown parks, all the people whose dogs have to walk around trash and broken glass. All the unemployed, all the underemployed, all the undereducated. All the people who have to walk blocks a mile to reach the bus stop. All of us citizens who want to be, want a better, safer, more equitable city. Police don't prevent crime. Police perpetuate the prison system. End of story. Think about your constituents, not the police union. Tinu Alano, I don't believe we need to increase funding for the police. For example, that money could be spent rebuilding community, the community during and after the pandemic. Kelly Hannan states, I am asking that you defund IMPD this way. Stop recruiting and hire more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Rebecca Cabin stated, as a resident of Indianapolis, zip code four-six-two-zero-two. I demand that the city county council reduce the budget for IMPD and reallocate the funds. To non-policing forms of public safety and community support such as social services. Youth services, housing, education, and other community resources. Jordan Allen states, for our city council to vote to increase its allotment to IMPD's budget. Amidst several accusations of ill behavior and distrust is irresponsible and shows an extreme ignorance. To what the general public is asking for. For us to continue to dump, dump money into the problem reveals absolutely no intuition. For problem-solving from our city leaders and should be brought. Brought to point where they seek reelection. Amanda Thrasher states, stop recruiting IMPD. Stop recruiting, hire more cops. Transfer MCAT to healthcare service, healthcare organizations without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Whitney Field states, constituent on the Near East Side here. Please decrease IMPD funding and increase funding for social services. Thanks. Wayne Bork states, provide the funds, but redirect some of the existing police funds for increased training, please. Chris Collins states, hi, my name is Chris Collins. I am a concerned voter in District Eighteen, zip code four-six-two-three-seven. Writing to encourage my city county rep, Michael Paul Hart, to advocate for defunding IMPD. In favor of reinvesting in Indianapolis communities. The IMPD budget for two thousand twenty-one ignores the protests and legitimate concerns of thousands of. In the Indianapolis community. And the actions proposed within the budget not only fail to address those concerns. But in some cases actively perpetuate the problems the city ought to be addressing. This, this budget and its associated problems can begin to be addressed by. Reframing from recruiting and hire more cops, transferring MCAT to healthcare organizations. Without officers on the team and finding additional cost savings through an independent financial audit. Only by reinvesting in the communities are we able to provide a preventative. Rather than a punitive, ineffective, and often racist approach to crime that benefits and serves all members of our community. Please budget accordingly. Kayla Bloodso states, stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without any IMPD officers on the team. Find cost savings through an independent audit. My zip code is four-six-two-one-nine. My counselor is David Ray. Claire King Shiro. States, do not increase the IMPD budget, instead decrease the budget. Stop recruiting and hiring officers. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. In light of the global pandemic, redirect the funds to public health. For the coronavirus, for coronavirus testing, personal protective equipment, contact tracing, and public education. Transfer MCAT to healthcare organizations without IMPD officers on the teams. Carol, her name is Caroline, last name did not come through. I do not support the budget. Increase for IMPD and instead I would like to see a reduction in recruiting officers. There is, there's little evidence that increasing officers reduces violent crimes. I would like to see the budget allocated to mental health resources. Thank you. Marion County resident. Four-six-two-zero, oh, four-six-two-zero-two. Pablo Boscazar. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Rebecca Mason, defund IMPD. Stop recruiting and hiring more. Stop recruiting, hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to the health, to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. You can, your community needs more from you. And more of the same bad solutions for the same problems. Change and adjust after IMPD has shown their lack of care of citizens. It's, it's time that those who pay from here, from there, to have their voices. Defund IMPD and charge Officer Mercer Justice for Mikhail Rose. Kristen Swat, no, I read that one already, sorry. David Strom states, their counselors, IMPD is asking for. Two-hundred-sixty-one million dollars or twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. This is a seven million plus dollar increase over this year's budget. Going in large part to personnel costs, including recruitment. Yet there's little to no evidence that increasing the number of cops has an effect on violent crime. And in fact, IMPD officers have repeatedly stated publicly that many of the root causes are systematic. And outside of the scope of, of policing. Maybe instead more cops, instead of more cops, cars, and cameras. We would have housing, food, and healthcare. Maybe instead of, instead of school resource officers, officers. We would have actual resources for students, counselors, and teachers. Maybe instead of an underfunded MCAT. That still sends cops to mental health crisis. We would have a better health-focused police, police-free crisis response. Maybe instead of Cajun people who do no harm. We would prioritize the needs of the victims, survivors, and communities in repairing harm. Through transformative justice. Divesting from IMPD and investing. In communities is an achievable step towards building a better Indianapolis community. Please reject the proposed IMPD budget. Sincerely, David Stratman, sorry. Mary Beth Parks states, IMPD's budget should not be increased. I refuse to allow my tax, tax dollars to be used. To increasingly fund more state sanctions misconduct, harassment. And violence to my neighborhoods in Indianapolis. This is not the way to make our city safer. Rather, we should stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through independent, through an independent financial audit. Suzie Catertyrin, sorry. Defund the police. They cause more harm. Sacha Brady, constituent of Keith Potts. States, I urge you to reject the proposed IMPD budget. There's little to no evidence that increasing the number of cops has an effect on violent crime. And in fact, IMPD officials have repeatedly stated publicly that. Many of the root causes are systemic and outside of the scope of policing. Data from several US cities show that police only spend an average of four percent of their time responding to violent crimes. Even by policing, by policing on measures of success. They are failing with only two percent of serious crimes nationwide resulting in a conviction. Additionally, we have evidence of the immense harm IMPD inflicts on marginalized. And particularly black communities in Indianapolis. From two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, IMPD used force on thirteen out of every. Excuse me, one thousand black residents of Indianapolis. A rate of two-point-five times greater than the rate at which IMPD used for white residents. Divesting from IMPD and investing instead in our communities is one small achievable step towards. A goal of just allocation of Indianapolis's resources. Maybe instead of more cops and cars and cameras, we would have housing, food, and healthcare. Maybe instead of school, of school resource officers. We would have actual resources for students, counselors, and teachers. Maybe instead of the underfunded mobile crisis assistance teams that still have cops respond to mental health crises. We would have a health-focused, police-free crisis response. Maybe instead of, oh, sorry. Courtney Trichelle states, dear, dear council, please work to divest. From IMPD and invest in more appropriate means to keep our community safer. Which includes the following, stop recruiting and hiring more, I mean, police officers. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare, healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent audit. We've seen, we've seen time and time, time and again, that police reform is increasingly, increases. I'm sorry, increased accountability measures are not working. To keep us safe, at least not all of us. The police have too much that falls under their umbrella of duties and responsibilities. And something needs to change. Defunding IMPD does not mean immediate disappearance. With no replacement, it means divesting from the institution and reinvesting in other areas that work. Emily Fisher states, my zip code is four-six-two-zero-three. I am a, I am concerned with the proposed. With the proposal to increase IMPD's budget instead of adding seven million dollars to the IMPD budget. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. And fund them as their own program. MCAT's goal is to de-escalate situations and to help citizens. Police officer's goal is to punish as far as we can tell. Their presence and their weapons escalate situations and can lead to citizens being further hurt. Or injured. These funds could be allocated and utilized to help citizens stay safe. But, but not if they are toward, put toward IMPD. Jason Keigho, Dominika Hudson, Patrick Holman. And Tarina Love state, stop recruiting, stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to healthcare, to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Rebecca McCracken. States, while I understand the need for public safety, I do not believe an officer with a gun is necessary in all situations. I do not think a Band-Aid of changes will make the kind of substantial changes necessary. It is clear that policing on the whole, on the whole in this, in this country. Is racist, is racist from the very beginning. And I don't think that twenty-nine percent of the city's budget should be going to a racist system. I would like to see an independent review of IMPD's finances. Investing from IMPD can take, and investing in communities is one small achievable. Investing from IMPD can take, and investing in communities is one small achievable step in the city county that the city county can take. Thank you. My zip code is four six two three six. Stella. Potopas. States. Please commit to divesting the seven million dollars increase in IMPD's budget directly into our community instead. This means expanding low-income housing, bolstering funding for shelters and improving case management. Free clinics and access to social workers and mental health professionals for our citizens. And investing in public transportation and bike routes. The city needs to make firm but manageable steps in the direction of deflating the budget for our police department and shift our, our focus to solving the problems in our cities upstream. Olivia Murray states. Defund IMPD. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an, an independent financial audit. Prioritize health accessibility through public transportation, increase homeless shelters capacity. Nicole Gavin states, I would like the budget to prioritize health accessibility through public transit. Increase shelter capacity and increase funding to the health department. Taylor Luster. States the, the public transportation in Indianapolis isn't extensive enough for people that live outside the neighborhoods. Many people can't get to doctor's appointments or job interviews because of this lack of reliable transportation. Additionally, we need to focus on increased shelter capacity. It is about, it is about to get very, very cold and many people don't have a home to return to. It would be helpful to have a place for people who are not sober to stay for the night and then receive help from a social worker. Just last week, my friend had to help a young girl who was completely lost, try to find a shelter for the night. But because she was not sober and she had, she had to sleep in a parking garage on the ground. We need to do better to support our social workers and give them better access to these two people that need them most. Jordan Owen states. The new city budget should divest money from IMPD and real, reallocate more funds for essential transportation. Increase, increase shelter capacity. And other preventative health and mental health. Health interventions. Such as hiring additional support staff like trained mental health counselors and social workers to intervene in situations that police are not adequately equipped. As an Indianapolis resident of four six two zero two, medical student and future physician. This is a topic I am passionate about. We can lower future public health costs by implementing effective preventative and intentional or interventional care now. Rebecca. Merker. States, the budget proposal needs to prioritize matters of public health such as health accessibility through transportation, increase shelter space for the homeless, increase health department budgets for case managers, case management, social workers, community. Health, health work. These aspects of public health hold the ability to greatly improve health and well, the health and well-being of the entire city by serving the population in key ways. Leah Birdy. Resident of Davington Community Area in Center Township. The time to divest from IMPD is now. Time and time again, it has been made abundantly clear that IMPD explicitly and unapologetically encourages excessive use of force, yeah, military's equipment and tactics to reactively address situations in ways that reinforce systemic oppression and disenfranchisement. Most notably. At the expense of people who are rationalized as black. If our true, our objective as a city and as a part of a large society, a larger society is to minimize violations of our bodies and rights to basic necessities. Healthy food, adequate shelter and clean, and a clean environment through some entity that we ask to protect and serve, then the IMPD has fallen short in its end in so many ways perpetuated the crimes that it purports to prevent. Achieving safety and justice in Indianapolis will necessitate the citywide reckoning with the ways in which redlining and other nefarious phenomena have produced massive disparities that persist to this day. In large part due to police being given increased support to reinforce those disparities over the years. If we expect the city of Indianapolis to become a more safe and, and just. Thank you, Greta Tro, Trojan states, my name is Greta Trojan. I am a medical student at Indiana University of Medicine in Indianapolis, District Sixteen. I am commenting to remind the council of barriers in place that make Indianapolis the location of one of the worst healthcare health outcomes in Indiana. Some of these factors include inadequate resources in the healthcare department and lack of adequate public transportation to access, to access healthcare services. Teo Homacher states, I am disgusted at the rising and ballooning police budgets around the nation. Even when the public speaks up, our leadership fails us again and again. We need to lower budgets. We need to disarm and defund police. Put more funding into bias training and transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD, IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent fin, financial audit and stop recruiting and hiring more cops. We want them to have less power, not more. Listen to your people. Mary Speck. Um, four six two two eight. As a resident of Marion County, I am requesting that the city would deny IMPD. But the IMPD budget proposal and shift its budgetary priorities to increasing the number of police to invest, to investment in our communities on other levels. Though I would like to see some of the IMPD budgets go towards increased use of body cams, accountability and ongoing training for police officers as well as mental health care for our existing police officers. We need to be spending more money investing in our community. I would like to see social workers and other professionals be contracted by the city to attend situations that involve mental health issues. The city should invest in initiatives that promote economic development in underserved and high crime areas. We need to invest money in addressing and rooting out racial discrimination and bias that permeates our criminal justice system. The city must divert funding from efforts to militarize our police. Our police departments to restorative and transformative justice efforts in Indianapolis. Brianna Harding states, listen to the people's call to defund IMPD. No budget increase. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. I live in District One, four six two, six eight, and I am calling for our city to reevaluate this proposed budget in light of the request of people. Rachel Hubbard states, please do not increase the budget for IMPD. Please instead reallocate those funds to help the community create a new, a mental health hotline to respond to mental health crises without involving the police. Two thousand twenty has shown us that IMPD has spent more than enough money on their toys. It's time that taxpayer money benefits the people of the community. Mary Aang states, I think improving training, particularly in this de-escalating and not shooting first and providing body cams is absolutely necessary, but I don't think IMPD needs budget increase. They have plenty of resources that seem under, underutilized. They need to instead divert some of these proposed funds to social services and outreach programs that do not, that do more to reduce crime, in my opinion. Isaac Wilson states. Please consider lessening the IMPD budget in favor of addressing, addressing social determinants of help, help in crime. For example, a dollar in a childcare support. And childcare support is much more impactful than a dollar in police. I think it's supposed to be departments. Stop responding to crime and try to get ahead of it. Juliet Hardisty. States prioritize health accessibility and health department management funding. Comment from a resident, four six two oh eight. Whitney Newton states, I live in four six two two zero, council, under Council Oliver. I believe that Indianapolis, I mean, the city county council of Marion County should divest from IMPD and invest in our cities instead. IMPD causes immense harm to our community, particularly, particularly people who are immensely vulnerable. Our city needs more housing, food and better healthcare, not more cops. It's time to stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without officers, IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Rebecca Schaefer states, I am an Indianapolis resident living in zip code four six two zero five. I believe it is long past time for our city to invest in our black communities. The coronavirus and the economic impacts of the pandemic have hit our black neighbors much harder than their white counterparts. Black communities were already suffering from the impact of historic racism that has affected, has affected housing income and access to education, to name just a few. Bolstering the IMPD budget will not help to resolve or even mitigate these issues. And I believe they will make problem, the problem worse. Please consider using the proposed raise in the budget to assist our neighbors. It is long overdue. Marlena, hey, I ask that you consider the following. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Olivia Sim states, the city does not want more police to be hired. We want more public services. We want housing for the homeless, care for the mentally ill, redress for violence. Violence perpet, perpetuated by the police against our city and funding for IPS. The meager off, offerings of the crisis team at the police department is insufficient to meet the needs of our community, serving until only six PM with only a few teams. Give us instead teams of medical and social services professionals that can answer these calls twenty-four seven. Sarah Pott states, I want the city to invest in education, mental health resources, community resources and police-free crisis response teams rather than supporting an increased police budget. Near Eastside Community Member, four six two zero one. Andrew Sim states. Help the hiring of additional police. We need an independent audit of the police budget to find their cost savings. We are asking you and have been asking you since June to reduce the police budget, not add to it. We are asking you to reduce the presence of police in our communities and replace them with social services with the social services we desperately need. Weston Bonzek states, greetings. I urge you to divest from IMPD and reinvest in our communities as a homeowner and taxpayer in District Twelve. And it's, and it is frustrating that so much of my family's tax money goes to police when it could be better used elsewhere. Please reduce the police budget and increase the budgets for aspects of our community, of our city government that improve material outcomes and provides care for Marion County residents. Lynette, then hi. I'm writing to ask that you reject the IMPD budget proposal for two hundred six million, sixty-one million dollars. Before any more dollars are allocated to the police, we need to, we need a proposal for police reform and allocations to areas that serve Marion County's needs such as trained mental health providers, accessible, healthy foods, affordable housing and healthcare. Thank you. Washington Township, four six two two oh. Brian Wolf states. To the city of Indianapolis, to the city of Indianapolis, Marion County Council members. Please know, know that I support one hundred percent fully all Indianapolis and Marion County law enforcement agencies with violent crimes such as murder exceptionally high in our city and rampant dangerous street racing all, on all sides of Indianapolis. That, that is putting lives unnecessarily at risk. We need more law enforcement resources, not less. Nothing can be achieved without being able to live in safety from violent crime or from reckless carelessness. Reckless careless drivers threatening the safety of those around them. Safety first. Then we can solve some of the other problems we face in our city. The investing from policing in this turbulent time is not accept, is not an acceptable con, concept. Please do whatever the police professionals advise. They need and fully support all Indianapolis Marion County law enforcement agencies. Thank you. Kim Preston states, we're in the middle of a pandemic and budgets are going to tighten in all communities over the next couple of years. Please consider finding cost savings through an independent financial audit before dramatic, dramatically increasing IMPD's budget. Mary Scott states, I've noticed that there is a seven million dollar increase in the funding proposed for IMPD this year. They already take up a quarter of the city's budget. Please do not continue to fund additional police officers. Please use those funds and then some for expanded mental, mental and physical healthcare services. Also, transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Social problems require social solutions, social solutions, not more police. Browan, Browan, Bronwyn Greenfield states. IMPD is asking for two hundred sixty-one million dollars or twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. This is a seven million dollar increase over this year's budget going towards vehicles, body cams and personnel costs, including recruitment. I'm asking the council to defund IMPD, stop recruiting. I'm asking the council to defund IMPD, stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. I live in zip code four, six, two, three, four. Margaret McLean states, as a citizen and resident of Indianapolis District Two, four, six, two, two, oh. I do not approve of the budget increase. I encourage the city to find alternatives to police in as many ways as possible. I understand this won't happen overnight. Simple places to start would be reducing recruitment and hiring. And removing police from all schools and replacing them with trained counselors or social workers. Divest away from police. Reallocate funds to community food, services, healthcare, and education. Thank you. Jillian Clark, I encourage the council to divest from policing in our communities. And put these resources into community support. Many Indianapolis residents, myself included, fear police presence in our communities. Given IMPD's poor record, our taxpayer dollars are going towards a service we have little faith in. Reallocating these funds towards community support, financial support for those struggling due to the current pandemic. Accessible housing, et cetera, would help our community thrive in ways that the current policing environment. Does not facilitate. Katie, I'm sorry, Kaylee Shoup. I had been a resident of Indianapolis for eleven years and currently reside in zip code four, six, two, zero, two. The council needs to drastically reduce the funds to IMPD. Which is proposed to account for twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. And is an increase from the previous budget. Defunding IMPD means providing funds to other resources in the city. Specifically, the council should stop recruiting or hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Evaluations of MCAT have shown that mental health is the leading reason for MCAT response. Law enforcement officers should not be the primary responders when someone is in need of a mental health. Or other healthcare professionals. Thank you for considering my comment. Amy Wilkinson states, I have been a resident of Indianapolis for eleven years. Zip code four, six, two, oh, two, the council needs to drastically reduce the funds from. I, the funds to IMPD which propose to account for twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. And is an increase from the previous budget. Defunding IMPD means providing. Me providing to other resources in the city. Specifically, the council should stop recruiting or hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Evaluations of MCAT have shown that mental health is the leading reason for MCAT response. Law enforcement officers should not be the primary responders when someone is in need of mental health or other healthcare professionals. Nathan Crainer states, I live in District Two in Browerble. And I encourage the council to not increase the budget for police by another seven million dollars. We should instead look for ways to defund the police and invest that money into the community. Thank you. Jacqueline Langer states, IMPD is asking for two hundred sixty-one million dollars. Or twenty-one, twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. This is a seven plus million dollar increase over this year's budget. Going towards vehicles, body cams, and personal costs, including recruitment. Yet there's little to no evidence that increasing the number of cops is, has an effect on violent crime. In fact, and in fact, IMPD officials have repeatedly stated publicly. That many of the root causes are systemic and outside of the scope of policing. Data from several U S cities show that police on, only spend an average of four percent of their time. Responding to violent crimes. Even by policing own me- by policing's own measures of success, they are failing. With only two percent of serious crimes nationwide resulting in a conviction. While we cannot prove the effectiveness of policing, we do have evidence of the immense harm IMPD inflicts on marginal, marginal. Marginalized, sorry, can't say it, and particularly black communities. From twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, IMPD used force on thirteen out of every one thousand black resident. Of Indianapolis, a rate two point five times greater than the rate at which IMPD used force on white residents. We draw from decades of queer black feminist scholarship and organizing. When we imagine a world without policing. What kind of city would we build if our city county councilors refuse to let IMPD hoard so much of our money? What if we just had, what if we had just allocation of all the city's resources? Rhonda Bennett states, I am a longtime Marion County resident and a taxpayer. I live and work here. With that in mind, I pay taxes for police and fire protection. Instantly oppose any efforts to defund or reduce police funding. I doubt those proposing to defund the police actually pay taxes here, let alone live here. Also, we know that defending the police accomplishes nothing. Already Minneapolis is seeing a spike in crime and Indianapolis is already on track to surpass last year's crime rate. We have a problem and the police. And the police is not it. Defunding the police is an idea born in the pits of hell. And I encourage you to support IMPD in every way. Here's what Minneapolis is learning now. May we not go, may we not go down the road, or that, this road. For, they provided a, a link to a Fox News story. Wesley Boland states, healthcare accessibility and availability, and availability. Should be a major part of the city budget, both in District Sixteen. Where I live and go to school and throughout the city. Improve and reduce costs, approved and reduced costs. Public transportation, increase. Increase shelter capacity and more funding in general to our health departments for case management. Social workers, community health workers, et cetera. This is since, this is essential to reducing health disparities and creating greater Indianapolis area. Especially during the pandemic, healthcare accessibility is extremely important and improvement is needed on many fronts. Rihanna Blackwell states, four, six, two, zero, one. IMPD is getting a seven plus million dollar increase in budget. That money needs to go elsewhere. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to healthcare, to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. And we need to find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Ally Mutus Foss states, IMPD is asking for two hundred sixty-one million dollars or twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. This is a seven plus million dollar increase over this year's budget. Going towards vehicles, body cams, and personnel costs, including recruitment. Yet there's little to no evidence that increasing the number of cops has an effect on violent crimes. And in fact, IMPD officials have repeatedly stated publicly that many of the root causes are systemic. And outside the scope of policing. Data from several U S cities show that police only spend an average of four percent on other time on responding to violent crime. Every, even by policing's own measures of success, they are failing. With only two percent of serious crimes nationwide resulting in a conviction. While we cannot prove the effectiveness of policing, we do not have evidence of the immense harm IMPD inflicts. On marginalized and particularly black communities. From twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, IMPD used force on thirteen out of every one thousand black resident of Indianapolis. A rate two point five times greater than the rate at which IMPD uses, use force on white residents. We draw back decades from queer black feminist scholarship and organizing. When we imagine a world without po- policing. What kind of city would we build if our city county councilors refuse to let IMPD hoard so much of our money? What if we, what if we had just, a just allocation of all the city's resources? Maybe instead of more cops, cars, and cameras, we would have housing, food, and healthcare. Maybe instead of school resource officers, we would have actual resources for student counselors. Thank you. Alyssa. Gislar states, I urge you to reject IMPD's budget request for two hundred sixty-one million dollars. Or twenty-nine percent of the city's budget. This is a seven plus million dollar increase over this year's budget to fund more officers and more equipment. Yet there's little to no evidence that increasing the number of cops or equipment has effect on violent crime. And in fact, IMPD officials have repeatedly stated publicly that many of the root causes are systemic. And outside the scope of policing. Therefore, I ask you to instead invest the money in housing, food, education, and healthcare. Our community is in dire need of a community-based mental health services. It is time to remove police from our existing mobile crisis assistant teams. And embrace teams composed of highly trained professionals, including nurses, doctors, psychiatrists, and social workers. To reduce the incidence with people who are in mental health crisis. This is one place you can, you could use a portion of that, two hundred and sixty-one million dollars. From twenty-one, from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, IMPD used force on thirteen out of every one thousand black residents. Of Indianapolis, a rate that is two point five times greater than the rate at which IMPD used force on white residents. Black and white people use marijuana at sim- similar rates. But in Indiana, black people are three point five times more likely to be arrested for marijuana possession. And than white people. These racial disparities must not be ignored. I live in Brookside and neighbor, a neighborhood where the median household income is. Twenty-three thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars. And fifty-three percent of my neighborhood, neighbors live in poverty. Thank you. Sarah Hutchinson, a resident of Indianapolis. As a resident of Indianapolis, I am aware of that IMPD is asking for two hundred sixty-one million dollars of the city's budget. This is a seven million, seven plus million dollar increase. And they're over in this year's budget. Going towards vehicles, body cams, and personal, personnel costs, including recruitment. Yet there's little to no evidence that increasing the number of cops has an effect on violent crime. And in fact, IMPD officials have repeatedly stated publicly that many of the root causes are systemic. And outside the scope of policing. Data from several U S cities show that police only spend an average of four percent of time responding to violent crimes. Even by policing's own measures, success of, of success, they are failing. With only two percent of serious crimes nationwide resulting in conviction. While we cannot prove the effectiveness of policing, we do have evidence of immense harm. IMPD inflicts on marginalized and particularly black communities. From twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, IMPD used force on thirteen out of every one thousand black residents of Indianapolis. A rate two point five times greater than the rate of, at IMPD, at which IMPD used force on white residents. This is not okay with me. I ask that you decrease IMPD's budget in the following ways. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. And find cost savings through an independent financial audit. I hope you will consider this proposal. Thank you. Charlene Birdsong, I request that, that council consider removing funding from IMPD. To hire and recruit new cops. Also, transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without officers on the teams. And fully comply in a thorough independent financial audit. Thank you. Jackson Griffith Lindsay states, District Sixteen. Please prioritize access to healthcare through increased public transportation, shelter capacity, and funding to the department. To the health department for case management. Esther Ainge states, I think IMPD has plenty of money in their budget already and do not need to, need an increase. That money would be better spent on expanding, expanding social services or education. Which further reduces crime, in my opinion. If they must spend money within the department, they should spend it on better training regarding sensitivity on racial issues. And deescalating situations. The violence and killing of innocent people at the hands of police must stop. And everyone is innocent until proven guilty, which is determined by the judge and jury, not the police officers. Police officers need to stop shooting first and asking questions later. I am tired of officers who think they are judge, jury, and executioner. They are none of those things. If they must spend money on equipment, then, then number one. Thing on the list should be body cam for every IMPD officer. There is no reason why they should not have them already. I live in Indianapolis in four, six, two, two, zero zip code. And I would like to see these, this, this city prosper and every one in our city to do better. Carl Sam states, now is the time to do the right thing. To take a second look at the way the city budget is being misused. Do not make it worse, do not increase IMPD's budget. In fact, morally and fiscally, the morally and fiscally correct thing to do is to, is as follows. Defund IMPD, stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Business as usual is disproportionately killing black people. And it is a waste of funds that could otherwise help black and poor people. Thank you. Andy Beck states, IMPD, IMPD budget dollars would serve the city better if used for anti-poverty purposes. Stop recruiting and hire more officers. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Benjamin Leslie states, we must divert resources from IMPD to, to asset-based solutions. Social work, food, access, et cetera. Defund the police as much as possible. It doesn't matter how good our police are. They could be the best police force in the country. It is still the wrong mechanism for the community at this time. Too much power, too much power, too much immunity. I understand that our number of police per capita is already low. Please make it lower. Form an unarmed crisis response team. Fund mental health crisis like we fund pyromatics. Let's be creative, it's time. Danielle Rupsis states, I live in Indianapolis. I'm a constituent of City Council. District, well, I'm sorry, City Council, um, I love, oh, I live in four, six, two, five, zero. Molly, Molly Seymour states, please divest from the police. Budget should go towards healthcare organizations and other. Budget should go towards healthcare organizations and other programs for social wel- welfare in addressing the needs of the community in correct, in a proactive way, not a reactive way. Recruiting and hiring more police officers is not needed. And an independent financial audit of the police should be executed to find to find, reduce the budget and reduce unnecessary spending by police, by the police department. Police officers should not have the job description they have today. Therefore, we need to divest and reassess how best to support our community. Thank you for your consideration. I live in the Mapleton Fall Creek community. Lori Evans states, I would like to ask that the request for a seven percent increase in IMPD funding from the city budget be rejected. While I do believe that having updated vehicles and body cams are important, I am confident that the police department can determine through independent audit how to cut their expenses and costs to secure these items within the exist- existing budget funds. I do not believe that additional IMPD workforce should be approved. Instead, I would ask that the city use the seven million dollars to fund in funding to transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization and in introduce non-policing forms of public safety. Public safety and community support such as social services, youth services, housing, education, healthcare and additional community resources. I would also like to request that a portion of the IMPD budget is reallocated to these efforts to provide Indianapolis with a robust and public people-friendly solution. My previous neighbor, neighbor had severe mental illness. However, he was able to secure a and ma- maintain the rental house next door to me for more than seven years. After he experienced some personal challenges, he had interactions with the police, which ultimately ended, ended with him being arrested and placed in jail. He lost his home, his beloved pet dog and all of his belongings and his sense of security. I am confident. Thank you. The city of Indianapolis, oh, sorry, Lindsey, Lindsey Smith. To the city, the Indianapolis City Council, the outcome of the Breonna Taylor case and the lack of action and account accountability in the local cases of the murders of Drejon Reed and Mikel Rose proves to us that black lives do not matter to police. Police cause harm and are treated as though they are above the law. The only way to protect the lives of black people is to divest from police and invest in our communities. Please listen to the needs of Indianapolis, of the Indianapolis community and reallocate the IMPD budget to more community support. We should not have to have body cam cams on our police officers to hold them accountable to do the right thing. This is wasted money that could be better spent ensuring that the basic needs of our community are met. Madeline Hudson states, conduct an independent financial audit to eliminate unnecessary spending. Zip code four six two zero eight. Just read this one. This is a duplicate. Breonna Bartalucci, I oppose defunding the police. Mackenzie Jones, stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Defunding IMPD, defund IMPD. These funds should not be going into the budget. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without police officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Okay. Meredith Brickel states, I am an Indianapolis resident, zip code four six two zero one. I want you to reduce the IMPD budget. You can accomplish this by recruiting and hiring fewer cops, transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Thank you. Karen Duval states, I urge, uh, urge the city county council to divest from policing. Policing does not prevent violence and in fact, it can, and in fact, can escalate it. As a constituent, I would like to see that funding to be invested in community support, including mental health care, education and childcare. Lorraine Stark states, I am a resident of city county council District twelve and I am highly opposed to an increase in the budget of, for IMPD. This is not how to keep our neighborhood safe. I definitely believe crime is a concern and therefore we need to spend more money on services that will decrease crime and less on reactive services like policing. Schools, athletics, food, hunger programs, clubs and after-school programs for kids, mental health services, COVID emergency relief and transportation to and from programs and services would all reduce crime better than spending almost one-third of the city budget on cops. IMPD receives more than enough money already. They just choose to allocate resources to initiatives that don't prevent crime. IMPD needs leadership that will be willing to redirect crime fighting away from our criminal, criminal genetic drug war. Enough is enough. Do the right thing and invest in the services of our community needs. Thank you. Julie M. Stutz, Julia M. Stutz states, I am a resident of four six two four zero. IMPD is asking for two hundred sixty one million dollars or thirty percent of the city's budget. This is a seven plus million dollar increase over the city's over this year's budget, going towards vehicles, body cams, personnel costs, including recruitment. I want to tell the council to defund IMPD. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Eric Caskey states, for what it's worth, I would like to see IMPD fully funded. There's always room for reform, improvement and better practices. Civil, civil liberties are, are the utmost importance and should be vigorously protected and upheld. But there is indeed an increasing amount of violent crime that deserves active intervention to solve and address. There was just a shooting at the intersection adjacent of me this past weekend. There may indeed be some things that social workers can better solve, but they are not the solution when dealing with the disturbing increase of gun violence in particular. On a side note, I would love for some of this increased funding to go to traffic cameras. Autom- automated ticketing via mail could both reduce the dangers driving along Thirty Eighth Street and reduce the amount of civilian cop interaction. Win-win. Amanda Sizemore, I mean, I'm sorry, Alexa Sizemore states, there's absolutely no reason for IMPD to receive over a hundred thou- a hundred million dollars of local tax dollars. This funding should be dramatically reduced or allocated for other social programs like the Public Defender Fund or Indy Parks. What is IMPD spending all of this money on? They are using expired tear gas just, they were using expired tear gas just this past summer. There is no need for them to have so many resources and continue to inflict on the public. Some of their officers right now are charged with battery and are being sued for the harm they have caused. Why is this city paying its police officers so much money for such negative effects on the public? There's no reason. Funding needs to be dramas- dramatically reduced or reallocated. Tequila Bank states, IMPD does not need increased funding. We need to divert those funds and invest in the community, particularly on the east side of Indy. We need more after-school activities for, for youth, more grocery stores, more educational and housing opportunities for residents. We have the resources and the main power, and the manpower. We need to use them more efficiently and increase funding for the cops, ain't it? Bree Robinson states, we have seen an increase in homicides in Indianapolis. There's clearly sys- systemic issues arising that are not being addressed by our city. How does, how does allocating more funding to IMPD help address those systemic issues? Shouldn't our tax dollars be reallocated to programs that help reduce violent crime rather than for officers to respond to crime after it has already been committed? Dr. Adam Henz or Henze states, it is safe to say that most educators in Indianapolis believe that the overall proposed budget prioritized the long-term sustainability of our city jails more than our city schools. Do you believe this is a fair criticism? And if not, can you point to line items in the budget that show where you have prioritized education and social services more than jails and policing? Nathan Payne states, defund and divest from IMPD. Fund our neighborhoods and invest in our community. Stop recruiting and hiring new officers. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the team. Find cost savings through independent audit. Megan Hillier Geesler. I grew up in Indianapolis and within the last year have returned to pursue a PhD, a PhD. As I moved back to the state after years in both Washington DC and Salt, Salt Lake City, I was surprised to see the police violence had occurred while I'd been away. As, as the national issues came to light, Indiana was a firm part of the narrative. I firmly believe that we are a civil society in that the police have become a dangerous force against Americans, Indianapolites and all persons in the city. As a scholar of philanth- philanthropy, it has become increasingly clear that the police force and the attendant legal system have allowed for the excessive use of force, flat- flattening the individuality of cases, case narratives because of race, ethnicity or neighbor, or neighborhood of those involved in the call and the mounting distrust between people and the government. As the police have acquired more military-style dress and equipment, regular people have stopped embodying what the police were intended to be. Members of our community responsive to the needs of their own community, working with residents to provide for public safety and law, law-abiding. However, police have broken that covenant with members of this city, black and white, both, but clearly the break has had immeasurably negative impact on the black community members of the city. As a resident of Nongming City, thank you. Natalie Shaw states, I'm a resident who lives downtown four six two zero four. I am writing today to urge you to not increase the budget of IMPD. The IMPD receives a large portion of the city's annual budget year after year and the results remain the same or get worse. There is a direct correlation between high rates of po- poverty and high rates of crime. The solution is simple. Increase resources for people, not police. The proposed seven million dollar increase should be, should put towards programs that prevent the types of crimes that officers deal with on a daily basis. Food, housing and job security are the answer. We cannot continue to spend precious city dollars on equipment or police and expect that 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 will help prevent violence. We have to change our priorities and create a better system if we want safer communities for all. I hope you, hope and pray that you will listen to what so many citizens of Indianapolis are telling you. More money to IMPD will not, will do nothing to help make us safer. It is a waste and will not stop a murder, a shooting, a fight, a robbery or any other crime. The only way to prevent these acts of violence is to create conditions in which people have the resources they need so they could, so they do not resort to crime. Please reject this budget and commit to creating a better Indianapolis. Thank you. Megan Day states, hi, city county council. I live in Little, in the Little Flower neighborhood on the east side of Indy, four six two zero one. I'm concerned with IMPD's calls for an increased budget. Data shows that spending on policing does not in fact make our community safer. IMPD also caused the deaths of two young black men this summer, Mikel Rose and Drejon Reed. Our city's budget should be allocated to things that actually make our city safer, like education, affordable housing, public health and social, social safety nets, net programs. Thank you for your time. Ryan Agard, Agard states, in May and July, thousands of people took to the streets to exercise their constitutional right to demand that Indianapolis divest from the police department and instead invest in our communities, some of which need help badly. Many of them were beaten, shot and gassed by police officers for their troubles. It appears that the city's leadership has decided complete, to completely ignore the demands of the, other people and is proposing to increase IMPD's budget instead. This is frankly disgusting and cowardly. Indianapolis continues to give more and more money to IMPD each year, who then turn around and use it to terrorize the communities that need help the most. Giving the police more money every year has obviously proven futile in making the city a safer place to live. Why are we proposing to continue a course of action that has proven to be conclusively ineffective? Is this, is this stupidity, mental illness or corruption? I don't know, but it's wrong. Chief Taylor's justification for his department's new budget have been nothing short of laughable. I urge the council to reject this budget. Prove that you have value, that you value the people of your community over property and profit. Erin Brady states, I'm, I am a resident of Indianapolis District seventeen, four six two oh one. I am deep, I am deeply concerned about the proposed increase in IMPD's budget and the financial impact it will have on residents of our city through increased property taxes and uneven allocations of the local income option tax and public safety income tax. Despite adding approximately one hundred additional IMPD officers since twenty fifteen, homicide rates in the city continue to skyrocket and far exceed national averages. It is clear that sinking more money into IMPD will do nothing to keep the city safe. As a resident of the city, I ask that city county councils, that the city county council does not allocate funds for new IMPD cars, motorcycles and drones. I ask that you freeze raises for officers or decrease the overall officer count. I ask that you do not I ask that you do not allocate our tax dollars to pay legal settlements that result from the actions of IMPD officers. Instead, take these funds and invest them into the community itself by improving access to housing, healthcare, food, and other necessary resources. Finally, I, I ask that you provide further transparency into IMPD's finances. The fact that 30% of our city's budget goes to a single organization is deeply troubling, and the city deserves an explanation for why the council believes this money will do anything to keep us, keep us safe." Katie Bloom, or Blum, states, "I am writing as a resident of Indianapolis and a constituent of Council District 7 to urge the council to vote down any budget that would increase funding to IMPD. It has been just four months since IMPD officers clad in full riot gear lodged canisters into crowds and flooded the streets outside of this building with tear gas. Some of you attended the earlier protests, and many of you expressed concern at IMPD's actions. But in committee meetings and press conferences, Chief Taylor and other IMPD officers repeatedly attempted to justify their violence. And so a massive indiscriminate, indiscriminate chemical attack on civilians were a, were proportionate, sorry, response to a cracked window or a thrown water bottle. When two officers in the event response group were indicted for brutal, for brutalizing a woman, they arrested for curfew violation. The rest of the officers in the unit staged a walkout. IMPD did all of this by policing was in national spotlight. And they did it in response to protests." Hannah Milner states, "I would like to see the following happen with the upcoming budget. Stop recruiting and hiring more cops. Transfer MCAT to a healthcare organization without IMPD officers on the teams. Find cost savings through an independent financial audit. Zip code for comments, or 46208." And those are it. Those are all of our comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And please take a moment to drink some water. You've done very well. Is there any audience here in the public assembly room who wants to give public testimony this evening?
If, if you'll come up as I call your name, William Sipple, Sarah Howe, Wildstyle Pascal, and Jared Lopez. I'll, I'll continue with the others after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk. And do, do remember, we have two minutes and the buzzer will start.
My name is William Sipple. I'm among the many concerned taxpayers and citizens of Indianapolis that are here to ask the IMPD and the city council why it refuses to listen to the demands of the people of this city who pay its salary to divest funds from its already bloated budget back into our community. Why would you think an extra $7 million in funding will fix the systematic problem when it's clearly been proven that you are over-militarized and it is not the answer? You're asking for 29% of the entire city budget? For what exactly? So you could increase your stores of expired tear gas and rubber bullets to fire upon peaceful demonstrators? Do you need more money to increase the brutality of poorly-trained officers at low-income and minority neighborhoods? Do you need more military weapons and ammo to kill more black young citizens like Drejon Reed? You've proven you can't even take care of the systematic problem of homelessness and drug addiction outside your front door. This is egregious. It's $1.4 million for new vehicles, $1.2 million for body cams. You do not have a plan to expand the mobile crisis assistance team. You don't address any of the actual systemic problems. It's crazy, like $60,000 for two bomb disposal uniforms? What's wrong with the ones you already have? That is three times the amount of the median income of the people that live in this county. Need to give more money to the community and less money to these overpaid bullet-shooting assholes.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Howe. I live in 46268. I am extremely concerned that the IMPD is getting as much money as it is. We all know that police officers have qualified immunity. Body cams themselves are a waste of money because we know they're going to either fall off or turn themselves off if a police officer decides to do something rather against someone's civil liberties, let's just say. And and besides the qualified immunity aspect of it, if you really want to solve the crime problem of Indianapolis, you will take this money and you will invest it in the community and listen to us. I do not want any more dead people, young black people in this community anymore. We need to defund IMPD. We need to fix the homelessness problem by putting people in homes, which is actually cheaper than shoving them in the criminal justice system. We need to get mental health services accessible so that way they can be used before people end up in crisis and have the police called on them. We need to invest in the community. We do not need any more money for the police to tear gas us. We do not need any more money for the police to use military equipment. Why does the police need military equipment? Are they going to war against us? Because that's what it feels like to a vast majority of people who live in Indianapolis. We need to invest in our communities and not invest in a bloated police budget where they're using military-grade weapons, tear gas, which is by the way a violation of the Geneva Convention and a war crime against peaceful protesters. This needs to stop, and we need to invest in our communities. That's all.
Hello, I'm Wildstyle, 46208. Zip code. Since I was last here and told by the police, the police chief that they couldn't address my concerns about why more black men and women die every time they get a budget increase. Since then, I was on Harding Street and witnessed IMPD officers responding to some call on Edgemont Street. And I was sitting on the porch on Harding. And it was a schizophrenic, schizophrenic woman who ran across the street and almost got hit by north and southbound traffic. And the police were coming behind another car, a civilian car. And they turned on their sirens to make the car try to drive around a woman that's standing in the street having a mental health crisis. And they go, continue on their run, which was right down Edgemont. And I watched the whole thing, and they drive off, leaving the woman in, in the street like nothing ever happened. And this is who we're talking about giving more money to? When they've already admitted that they, they can't make anybody safer. We've got one-fifth of the population in poverty. A third of them rent burden, spending over 30% of their income in housing and slum conditions. And we're talking about what is IMPD gonna do? Well, IMPD already said they can't do anything. So why are we still here talking about this? They can't address mental health. And that woman, I actually know who she is because I see her all the time. Oftentimes, she's dancing in the streets, but usually not the main streets. And we didn't even know who to call. We did not know who to call, and the police didn't go back to check on her. We gotta do better. And this goes from the person who presented the budget, the mayor as well.
The IMPD does not deserve this budget increase. Reason number one, drug laws. The IMPD continues to enforce drug laws that were created with the specific intent of incarcerating black and brown individuals. According to Richard Nixon's chief domestic policy advisor, John Ehrlich, quote, "The Nixon White House had two enemies, the anti-war left and black people. We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be black, but by getting the public to associate blacks with heroin and then criminalizing it heavily, we could disrupt their communities. We could raid their homes and vilify them night after night on the evening news." End quote. Sadly, this has not changed, and these policies are still in effect today. In fact, up to half of all prisoners in our nation are incarcerated for simple possession. The IMPD is no exception as form of over-criminalizing the citizens of this town and disproportionately its citizens of color. I would argue that the funds from this budget increase could be better spent on a harm reduction strategy such as needle exchange programs, supervised injection facilities, and drug treatment on demand. Reason two, mental illness. The American Psychiatric Association states that up to 20% of all US police incidents involve a person with mental illness, making prison some of the largest inpatient psychiatric facilities in the United States. The IMPD is once again no exception in its interactions with the mentally ill. Those incarcerated with mental illness are released back into society with no improvement in their mental health, often to be arrested again, meaning the IMPD has created a revolving door, a revolving door of arrest and incarceration for people with mental illness. I would argue that the funds from this budget increase could be better spent on mental health professionals who respond to mental health crises. To take it a step further, funds would be even better spent on preventative mental health care to treat individuals before they reach such critical levels. Reason three, poverty and homelessness. Because we cannot make it illegal to be poor, poverty and homelessness are criminalized through civil violations, creating another revolving door of arrest and incarceration before releasing them back into the community with no better prospects than what they entered the legal system with.
Jonathan Howe, William House, and Eliana Enricus.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Jonathan Howe. I'm an Indianapolis resident. I've lived here all my life. This year, I witnessed the largest gathering of residents protesting at the state house that I have ever seen in 35 years living in Indianapolis. It was a historic moment. Andre Carson and the mayor both spoke. The message was clear. Invest more into preventing crime and less into responding to it. The budget increase request by IMPD is about insulting to residents of Indianapolis as the appointment of Jason Larison was. Time and time again, elected officials act like allies while actively fighting against the wishes of their own communities. Jason had a chance to move aside as an ally and elevate the voices of minorities in his community, and he refused. Will the council also refuse to listen to the wishes of its residents? Or will it do what Jason couldn't? And elevate the voices of residents of Indianapolis and refuse to increase IMPD's budget? This is my second IMPD budget hearing that I have
The budget, not on the counselors.
Thank you. This is my second IMPD budget hearing, and I have heard hundreds of comments against increasing funds for IMPD, and I can't recall even five comments in support. The people have spoken loud and clear. It's time to invest into preventing crime and not to responding to it. It's time to elevate the voices of the community members, and it's time to stop silencing them. It's time to listen more and talk less.
Hi, my name is William House, and I'm from 46205. I believe that in a time of a lot of the Indianapolis residents calling for defunding of the police, I think that it is very not heartfelt for the police officers to ask for more money, especially when this specific proposal was supposed to identify issues of inclusivity and diversity within the IMPD. Chief Taylor also stated that we, they do not actually keep track of good or good records of the race or the ethnicity of those they pull over, especially when it doesn't result in arrests. And because of this, I want to know what preventive measures we can take in order to kind of alleviate that issue. I'm curious to know what outside organizations focusing on the black and brown community and mental health communities has IMPD conversed with in order to come up with the idea that providing more officers, $7 million more officers will decrease some of these issues that we have within the community, especially when such programs as the MCAT are proven to be 95% of the time resulting in no arrests. I just can't see why we don't take some of that money and reinvest it into our community and programs that can actually alleviate some of the stress on IMPD by fixing some of those root problems. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eliana Enricus. I live in 46208. And initially, I just came here to hear, but after kind of experiencing everything, I decided to speak. So I wrote some notes. Most of them are reflection questions. So like someone mentioned earlier, have you noticed the amount of people that are experiencing homelessness directly outside of this building? How can you consciously come here and potentially vote for more criminalization of those who are already struggling? How do you speak opinions from, when considering the budget? Are you even listening? How hard have you considered proactive measures? Like many people have said, housing, mental health, education, employment, homeless services. If you do not address the root issues of problems, they are going to continue to perpetuate. There's enough evidence to support this, and I'm sure you know this. People are dying in the hands of police officers and people who we should trust. There are numerous amounts of public comments that were just given to us prior to this. I know we're tired. It was kind of disheartening to see a lot of councilmen disengaged as the comments were being read. No one was taking tally. No one was taking notes. Many of you are on your phone, and you should be embarrassed. How are you here? Well, a lot of you are here because in some way you've decided to serve your community. I just want to remind you that you serve us. You are here for us. How is this a public hearing if you do not hear us? Sorry, lost my note. Your position is to be a vessel for public opinion and not for personal gain. The choice is yours. You can choose to listen, to be innovative, and to potentially save lives. Whatever you choose to do that is on your conscience, and if you cannot handle that, you shouldn't be here. The police are killing people. What are you gonna do about it?
All the names I have, Mr. President. All I have.
All right, and thank you to, thank you to all who came out this evening to present testimony on, on the council budget. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 248, which is referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 248 approves an additional appropriation of $199,740 in a 2020 budget of the Marion County Information Services Agency Enhanced Access Fund for the conversion of Channel 16 to High Definition and implementing a new hosting service for the Recorder's Office. A PowerPoint presentation was given making the following key points. Standard definition equipment is no longer manufactured. Repairs, parts, repair parts and services are dwindling. Systems replaced are over 20 years old. This project will replace analog cameras in the public assembly room and meeting rooms. Mr. Montgomery stated that the budget will decrease by $100,000 in 2021. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right, thank you. The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments and councils? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have comments from the public?
No comments.
Right, very good. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to proposal number 248? All right, seeing none. Counselors, if there are no further comments on this, we will now proceed to the roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans? Counselor Evans, we can't hear you. If you can signify with the thumbs up or thumbs down. Thank you. Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray. Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor, Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 249, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 249 approves an additional appropriation of $50,000 in the 2020 budget of Department of Metropolitan Development Public Arts of Neighborhoods Subfund of Redevelopment General Fund to support 2020 Quick Action Community Connection Grant Program administered by the Arts Council of Indianapolis, which seeks to address the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic and help artists envision a more connected and just and equitable future for everyone. Ms. Julia Moore, Director of Public Art with the Arts Council of Indianapolis, gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. The current fund balance is $51,167. Their request is for an additional $50,000 and they can make up, and they can make at least 20 grants. The applications will be reviewed every two weeks or so. They will continue to take and review applications and funding into the funds are depleted. Counselor John Barth was present to speak and support the proposal. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to zero. And Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment. I'm pleased to be a sponsor of this along with Counselor Potts. This is, I think, a very efficient way of using dollars that have already been collected by developers to go into the Public Art for Neighborhood Program to be used in a very fast way, in a rapid way to both support neighborhoods and to support the arts community that who have been hit so hard by the COVID pandemic. But most importantly, these dollars will be used to, in a very safe way, rebuild community and bring people together during these, these challenging times. Thanks a lot.
Vice President Adamson, and then we'll go to Counselor Potts.
I was just going to ask to be added as a co-sponsor if the, the originals authors are.
Yes, please.
And Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just proud to be a co-sponsor in this proposal, and I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting it tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Is it working now?
Yes.
Oh, hey, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I'm very much in approval of this, and I just had a more clarification question about the specific budget in question on this. So is the Public Art for Neighborhoods Subfund, is that in the Department of Metropolitan Development budget already? Or is that from something else?
Counselor.
Counselor Barth, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your question, Counselor Evans. These are dollars. So as a process, the Art for Neighborhood Program collects dollars from developers who are getting incentives for doing projects in TIF districts. And they have a choice at that point. Either they can invest 1% of those dollars in public art that they fund themselves as a part of their project, or they can send those dollars to a fund that is then used for grants to support neighborhoods. And so these are dollars that have previously been collected that has happened to be housed in this budget. So it's not additional dollars, it's dollars that are there that's yet to be allocated.
And the Arts Council is the one that is to distribute the?
That's correct. They, they are the administrators of the program. And there is a committee that has individuals who are appointed by the council in the mayor's office to make the final decision. So the Arts Council administers it. This board does make those decisions, and I'm fortunate to be one of those board members.
All right, thank you. And I just have one like clarification question. And it's not specific to this, but just like the general neighborhood subfunds redevelopment question. Is this by itself as like a Public Art for Neighborhoods Subfund would be, you know, as to the Arts Council? But would there be separate neighborhood subfunds redevelopment general funds for other such things? Like for redevelopments, for, you know, housing gardens, for example? Would those funds be available if the developers in certain areas were to also be able to chip in for that?
Mr. President, may I speak or no? Yes. The way the program is designed, my, the intent when I wrote it was that it would be 8% of any investment that the city made to support development. But just due to state law and other sort of complexities, we're only able to do it in these very narrow situation of when the dollars came from a TIF in their, in their, in a TIF district. And so then how the, the, the funds go to the, to the Arts Council to be distributed. And then we wrote it in such a way that these projects can be very, very broad. So for example, it doesn't need to be a statue or a sign or some kind of visual art. It could be something as broad as, you know, getting a, some subset of the symphony to play. Like in my district at 46 in Illinois, unannounced to bring people together, right? So it's very broad in how it's defined. And I can't answer you specifically as far as what you're asking about gardens and so on, because the, the Arts Council has created a sequence of factors to be considered. But what I can tell you is that the way they're defining art and art special projects is, is broad in its definition. But this product, this program is specific to art somehow, public art related. So getting into more gardens and so on is sort of out of the scope.
All right, I, I had a separate question about the founding of the actual fund itself. So I guess I'll ask that after. So thank.
Thank you. Counselor McCormick.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I've been in support and of this since I read the first, since I read the proposal when it came through committee. And I would love, since it's open, is an option to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Any additional questions from counselors or comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, is there anyone in, in the public assembly room who would like to speak to proposal number 249? All right, seeing none. If there are no additional comments from counselors. Madam Clerk, do you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay. Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Counselor Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Battery.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Maury. I'm sorry, Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The public hearing for proposal number 225 2020 was postponed at our last meeting. And general counsel has informed me that no resolution has been reached during the interim regarding proposal number 225 2020. Res zoning case 2020 CZN 801, and therefore a public hearing is required on the proposal this evening. Section 151-79 of the code clearly outlines the process for public hearings for rezoning cases certified by the Metropolitan Development Commission. All counselors should have received a copy of those guidelines as well as an outline of the schedule, and we will adhere closely to those guidelines and time limits. Counselor Maury, in whose district the rezoning is located, called the matter out for a hearing at our July 13th meeting, and it was subsequently postponed on August 10th and again on September the 14th. As pursuant to our rules, I will call on Counselor Maury for an opening statement. Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I think I'd like to start off by saying here is, in my experience, this type of development has always been viewed as an easy approval when proposed on ground is appropriate for state lots on the comprehensive plan. And many constituents have expressed concerns with the vast amount of residential development in Franklin Township, as we've heard with previous proposals. This, however, but this proposed development has not received that type of feedback. It's gained support from myself, the Civic League, and I'm sure that Mr. Rutherford can elaborate a little bit harder on how hard it can be to get the Civic League on board with the new development. And as well as the state senators there, Senator Freeman have all agreed that this is a project that should move forward. This development is a life, this developer is a lifelong Indianapolis resident with the best interest in mind for a city they grew up in. The MDC hearing for this proposed development was flawed as can happen with what we are experiencing now with the virtual meetings. And I think that was one of the reasons that when it came time to hear the statements from myself, Senator Freeman and the Civic League, all in support of this development, those letters were not read into the record as often as has, has happened. Not to mention, when we look at this type of development, we look at a development now that is going to keep folks in Indianapolis. We've seen a mass exodus of people leaving the city for a more grand lot, a bigger lot, more, more land, bigger home. This gives people the opportunity to stay right here in Marion County where they're working, living and playing, and now raising a family to stay right here rather than search to Johnson County, to Hamilton County, to any of the donut counties that are taking these people in. They're working here and going home elsewhere. Keeps them in the city. I would ask that for the support of my fellow counselors this evening to pass this proposal and help show Franklin Township that our voices are being heard. I know I've said that in the past. I'm, I'm hoping tonight we can come to an agreement that this is a good development for the area. And if it, you know, even the Civic League and the, so the community does not have an issue with it, I don't see why we need to take an issue up with this.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. I will now call on the petitioner to state their case. Please keep in mind that you have 20 minutes total for your presentation, regardless of how many speakers participate. You may choose not to use the full 20 minutes or to save a portion of it for rebuttal. Our clerk will keep track of the time and a buzzer will sound when your time is up. If you do not use a portion of your time, our clerk will report the amount you have remaining for rebuttal. Mr. Rutherford.
Good evening. My name is David Rutherford, and I'm an attorney here in Indianapolis, 8801 Southeastern Avenue. I'm in an unusual position this evening because this is not, I'm not here as an attorney. I'm here as one of the owners of Thessaloniki Inc., along with my wife and two other couples we go to church with. We've formed this company four or five years ago, have done two or three subdivision developments. And last year, we had good success with a large lot project very similar to this in Franklin Township. There's a tremendous demand for these kind of lots for people that want to stay here. And we thought we'd try to create some more. And things have changed since the last time we did one of these cases. I've probably done 15 to 20 of them in my career. They used to teasingly call me the shared driveway king. So I'm not sure I like that name, but I have a lot, had a lot of experience with this. So we know how to do these developments. We know how to do them right. We know what's important to these buyers. And we actually have a list of buyers right now for these lots that it's not even been listed. So this is the kind of project that we know there's demand for, that there's lots of opportunity for tax revenue to the city, that we can solve some other problems around this piece of property by doing it. And there's really honestly, in our opinion, no downside. I have some exhibits. I'm going to spin through them pretty quickly. I'm not sure how the technology will work for everyone's screen, but I, again, I want to make sure you know where this is. This is in an area of Franklin Township. It's 32 acres. It is identified on the comprehensive plan for large lot rural and estate development, exactly what we've proposed here. It is identified as the highest and best use for this ground. This property is identified as environmentally sensitive, which means we're supposed to try to preserve trees and preserve the unique topography. We're, we're doing that. That's exactly what this is about. We're preserving over 98% of these trees. There's seven, roughly seven and a half acres of forested ground here that's worth preserving. The neighbors love this case with one exception. And I, I've done my darndest in this case. We've had, the COVID restrictions have hurt us and the residents and the MDC in being able to deal with this the way we would normally have dealt with these. But I have personally spent roughly an hour and a half per person, everyone that's around this site that's impacted by it. Every one of them, after they met with me, is in support of this case, or a couple of them just said they were no longer in opposition to it. We've solved the problems. We've discussed this with the people who are really going to be impacted by this, and they love it. And go ahead and flip to the next, next slide here, please. Again, this is the environmentally sensitive area. Go on to the next slide. This is a layout of the property, 16 lots on 32 and a half acres. It is intended to preserve trees, provide privacy on these lots. It's a unique lifestyle, and I'll admit that there's not very many pieces where this makes sense. But this is a unique lifestyle in this corridor where it's comp plan for this that lets people who don't want to live on top of each other, who don't want to, want to have an HOA that's running everything they ever do, or maybe want to have an outbuilding or an accessory building to have their kids furniture in rather than in their third car or their garage, or wherever they got to put it, or have a car, car repair project or something. That's what this is all about. And again, where it makes sense, we've had incredible luck with these in Franklin Township, and there is zero history of problems for the city or public safety problems with these. Go ahead and flip to the next one. This is probably where I'm going to stop with these exhibits, quite frankly. This shows you with color the residents around this who have signed the petition that we have in support of this. And I just asked you to recognize how hard it is in today's day and age to get people to say they're in support of much of anything. It's easy to pull people in on an online petition to get them to hate something, to be afraid of it, to just. It's easy to pull people in on an online petition to get them to hate something, to be afraid of it, to just oppose something. This project has virtually unanimous support, and quite frankly, even the remonstrators who've kept this from being an automatic approval by the council because they won't talk to me, the Gillespies, they wouldn't even be in the legal notice range of this case, except the seller that we're selling, or buying this property from, is keeping a parcel, which is two properties away from them, so they're in the legal notice range that way, they can't see it, they can't smell it, they can't hear it, that's kind of my standard for are you an impacted neighbor? They are not, and sadly enough, I, I still believe if we had a COVID scenario and we had an opportunity to get them in a room and talk to them with their neighbors, we might have been able to work this out. I guess people say I look for a pony under every pile of manure, maybe it was impossible in this case, but we would have tried and we have tried because that's my reputation, is we solve problems and we listen and we try to treat people through with respect. And the developments we're done with, I live out here, I'm not going to drive by something that's problems or garbage. I know there are three issues that I know the council is struggling with here, and they're kind of the same issues that staff is struggling with on this case. The sad part of it is, and the hard part for me, is we would never have taken the risk on this project, we, we've already engineered this site. We have drainage plans approved, the driveway cut's been approved because we got the plans done and all that stuff's been submitted, we never dreamed that we would end up here with a hundred grand out of pocket and have the M D C turn this down. But they did because staff of the first time in history in one of these cases actually is demanding a public street and public sidewalks, never had they asked for that. We've always been able to find a compromise, used to start with twelve-foot gravel drives. Now we're at, we went to bumble, bubbles on those, now we were at twenty feet, then we wanted to pave them. They've never asked for anything wider than twenty feet because that's what it takes legitimately for traffic to pass. Ninety percent of the primary and secondary ulterals in this county are twenty feet wide or less, and they're safe because people don't park on them. The key to this thing is people do not park on this private shared drive. So it doesn't need to be twenty-six feet wide or twenty-four feet wide or thirty feet or whatever because no one parks on it. These houses have their own seventy-five to a hundred and fifty-foot long driveways, that's where people park. There also are no sidewalks within miles of this project. So we've agreed to put our sidewalk across the fifty-foot of frontage that we have. These residents don't want to sidewalk, they don't want to pay eighty thousand dollars for sidewalk, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for sidewalks on this project. It's spread over sixteen homes because there's nowhere to go and there's obviously not likely to be any place to go, and as long as you and I live, that's why they're not such a big deal. And frankly, if people want to walk, they walk on this twenty-foot wide paved driveway. That is their area to go because there are sixteen homes and there's no traffic on it. Or they walk through the woods in their own backyard, that's, that's how these things have worked. We had an issue that caused a lot of confusion in this case, and that is the entry design. And I apologize for how confusing this got, it only appeared in the staff report because we submitted for a driveway permit and the reviewer asked us to submit a design, so we did. And there was a question asked by the reviewer, hey, as a private shared driveway, are they going to make these guys do an X L D cell lane or not? I've never had that asked ever, but they asked, so we got Nathan Sheets of D P W involved. We have an email from him, I've circulated that to some of the counselors, I know, I know I've sent it out a couple of times. It specifically says that Nathan Sheets has reviewed this, finds no benefit to an X L D cell, anything else, he likes our flared entry. Yeah, we've only got fifty feet, but it's only sixteen homes. And even the public streets that join Acton Road out there do not have X L, D cell, anything other than just an exaggerated flare, which is exactly what we're asking to put on ours, or it's been approved to put on ours. And that is the only issue we've ever been asked to deal with on this. So there are no public safety issues that we're aware of, we've solved everything we've ever had to solve in any prior case. We are dealing with a situation where staff has applied the ordinance that works very well on these small lot subdivisions, for the first time in history, they've applied that to this kind of a large lot project. And financially, they just don't work, we can put public streets and sidewalks in there, but these lots would be a quarter million dollars and up. We don't really want this to be a millionaire acres, we're not trying to make this exclusive, we want the police officers that work in this city, the other municipal employees, the other typical people that live in the city to eat, to be able to afford to live here. These are still four hundred thousand and up homes, but the least we can keep the door open for somebody, nobody would try these projects if they had to do them with public streets and sidewalks, and I'm not aware of one in the entire city that has been asked to do that before we got this one. Again, the truth is that we have, the soil's been tested, the health department's approved it. Our drainage system has been approved and designed, and we showed it to the neighbors and they love it because we're solving drains problems, historical drains problems on both ends of this property, upstream and downstream. That the city recently spent four hundred thousand dollars to try to serve part of it, solve part of it, but they didn't get it done. We're going to finish it out of our budget. These neighbors need this project to go through because we're going to spend money to fix their drainage problems and save the city from doing it. I think that's a huge benefit. This issue with the private shared driveway is the same thing, these people are going to take care of their own access. They pave it, they maintain it, they take the snow off of it, they, they take care of it, the city is not responsible for it, nor are they liable for it, no, no more so than they'd be liable for your own private driveway. And they take the tax revenue from these houses and they get it suspended on the roads out here that desperately need some additional money, this is a win-win. And if we were in a situation where we had a bunch of neighbors that were opposed to this, we wouldn't be here. I don't fight wars, I live out here, I got life's too short, especially my, out of my own pocket. This is highly supported, these have always been supported, we have never had remonstrance. And I'm not sure if they're on screen or not tonight, but if they are, they're the first ones in history that's ever remonstrated on a case like this, we had a couple of people that hadn't met with me yet at the M D C hearing, we subsequently met with them and we solved their issues and they're now okay with this case. But they tried to talk to their neighbors and the neighbors wouldn't talk to them, which is the same way they've treated me. And again, these are the same people that wouldn't even participate in your council's mediation process, which is just sad. But that's the only reason we're here, if we had been able to solve the problem with them, you guys would have been approving a compromise on this case two months ago and we'd never had this hearing. Again, I've tried to answer every question I can think of. We do know how to do this, and this is an incredible benefit, and this is not comparable to some of the past cases you've recently had in Franklin Township. I ask you to remember that, this is not something where there was an online petition where a bunch of people signed in opposition to it because that's easy. This is hard, I went door-to-door, I met these people, I listened to them, I heard what they had to say, we agreed to dozens of commitments on this case, and we've even agreed to more, the proposed commitments in front of you on this case represent the negotiations with the, the two remonstrators that we did solve problems with between the M D C and here to get down to just the Gillespies. And they also represent our effort to solve everything left with staff that we could possibly solve other than the internal sidewalks on a private drive, and the ordinance doesn't, by the way, provide for private, for sidewalks on a private road, we have private road specs too. It doesn't ask for them on private drives, it doesn't ask for them on private road. But it does ask for them on a public street, we cannot do that over sixteen lots, and we can't do public streets here. It's not good for the city, and it's certainly not good for our residents, they will not be able to afford these lots, it's just that simple. So with that, you guys have had a long night, I appreciate this, this is a very unusual remedy to be in front of you. And I've learned a lot to new listening, listening tonight as well, and I, and I feel sorry for you, you guys are in a tough spot in a lot of things, this is, should be an easy one. People like this, people are for this, there is no downside to this, I hope, and I know the people in Franklin Township would like to hear that the council hears them on this. I mean, we have so many things in this city that divide us. The God I serve says that we, he loves all of us equally. And I, I serve him, I, I believe that, that's why I'm so patient with people, that's why we do the right thing. And please, don't let this issue, this case be turned into something else where people in Franklin Township get to say that we're, we're living in a divided world, a divided city, I love this city. I've lived here since I was five years old, I've watched what's happened, so many good things in this city. I don't want to see it torn apart by division, whether it's, whatever it's based on, I don't want to see it happen. Please, don't make this case part of this, make it part of the solution. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I appreciate your time.
Madam Clerk, just for the record, how much time is left for the petitioner?
He has seven minutes and ten seconds left.
Very good. Are there any questions, other petition from?
Counselor Boots.
Are we asking questions now or waiting after the?
I think it might be better if we ask them now.
Sure.
Let's get them going.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Mr. Rutherford, just a couple of quick questions. I know some of the issues that were cited in the report were the interior sidewalks, the, the D cell, X cell bypass lanes, and I think the third was the width. What was the ballpark cost of, if you were to pursue the bypass lane and the blister bypass, what's the ballpark cost for that, the project?
People have been trying to meet me for years and he effectively did it. Honestly, the issue with the X L deal, D cell lanes was not really an issue of cost. We only have fifty feet of frontage, and so it would have required the cooperation of the abutting property owners on either side of our entrance and also across the street. Across the street would have been really almost impossible because there is a four hundred thousand dollar drainage project the city just put in. So that turning or passing blister, that ditch is within three or four feet of the edge of the road. There, there's really no way to do that without getting into that whole new storm sewer system. So that, that would, that was never on the table, quite frankly, having a, having a turning lane for a sixteen lot subdivision. The X L D cell lanes, we never explored the cost because the first conversation I had with D P W was why are we even considering that on a private drive scenario? They've never asked for that. But they went ahead and looked at, they looked at our engineers' traffic information and the design ramifications from the state, and they said, Nathan Sheets said, we don't see benefit to this, it's not necessary here. So, and he's instructed the guy who approves these at D P W, which is George Crock, to approve that design. So that issue went off the table, the issue with the street width, again, staff has never asked for these private drives to be wider than twenty feet, ever. We've actually agreed for the first three hundred feet of it that it would be twenty-four feet wide because arguably there could be a little more traffic at the front end of this, there's a turnaround area up front, there's mailboxes that'll be there. We saw, and it actually helps our drainage system maybe to have it a little wider, so we agreed to that and to pave it up front. But this is just a new issue.
And I'm sorry, that'll be the three hundred feet off Acton Road?
Yes, the first three hundred and twenty feet or so off Acton Road, we are paving that as part of the initial development and it'll be twenty-four feet wide.
Okay.
And then once it starts, once it gets back there with these things start splitting off, then we're down to twenty feet, but again, nobody parks on them. And the street that serves them, Acton Road, serves thousands of cars a day, it's nineteen and a half feet wide. So this is not a dangerous situation.
Final question, if I may, the, what I think I'm struggling with is your, the report from the D M D clearly still suggests denial. But then tonight you're saying D P W says there's not an issue, it's okay. Help us, how do we compare and weigh those two? These are both our agencies that are one saying yes, one saying no, we need help with this.
And I understand it, it's one of the, one of the hard things about bringing land use issues in front of the council is you guys don't get to deal with these often enough, really to maybe get a clear picture how the interplay works here, and I'm happy to try to help, help you see that. D P W really has a limited review in these processes. This was a planned unit development case, so Nathan Sheets was at our initial meeting with the city agencies. And he's the one at the time who said, I see no problem with these private shared driveways, I'd love to have these people pay taxes and let us use the money to take care of the streets we already have, we, we'd be fine with this, so he's never had an issue with that. And like I said, this design issue on the entry, he's, he's approved that. But their only deal, their only issue is that the D P W range of issues, which is the streets and the entry, that stuff. D M D is looking at a much broader issue. And in this particular case, they decided to review this case using the entire subdivision control ordinance. They put together a grid, it had over ninety potential issues in there. A lot of them weren't applicable to us, but of the ones that were applicable, we've been able to solve all of them but two and a half. We've got one hammerhead and one cul-de-sac instead of two cul-de-sacs, both of which meet the city turnaround specs, there's a spec for that, we're meeting them, we're just not having the, the, the width of asphalt or length or depth of asphalt, too, I think we're off on. And and they, they wanted public streets and public sidewalks, and normally with staff in the past, you can negotiate. You can sit down, they'll recognize, hey, this is a ridiculous cost to spread that over sixteen lots, it does, does match the comp plan. But there's some things that have changed with staff in the last year and a half, I still like a lot of them, I worked with them for most of my career. There's some new faces, there's a little bit of new newness, there's some new leadership over there, and for whatever reason, on this case, they did not look at this any differently because it was a large lot case. And that's not fair, we need to have some standards here that work for these kind of projects, or we need to take this thing off the comp plan and just quit telling people we can even try them out here, and that would be tragic. So I've actually volunteered to work with D M D to try to help them develop a set of alternate standards that are reasonable for a project like this and do not create public safety issues, and I'm still one to do that. I've served the city in a variety of volunteer positions over the years, I'm happy to try to help with that. But the issue of staff recommending denial on this case, there was no negotiation. The only way to solve the problem with them was give them everything they wanted, which we knew would break the project or quit. So that's why we're here, we're asking for your help because the things that are left, we cannot do, and they do not benefit this case, and it would be the first time in history that one of these kind of cases was, was asked to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, Counsel Gray.
Yes, Attorney Gray, please.
My problem with this is, out in my district, we had the same problem, all the people built these home additions and everything, and nobody put in sidewalks. Then all of a sudden, because it reduced the cost to the buyer not to put the sidewalks in at the time that they purchased. And then later on, as time go along, then they come back and want the city to put in sidewalks where there have never been sidewalks before. We're going through that same type issue right now in my district where people want sidewalks now, but at the time of the development, they said, well, oh, we don't want sidewalk. Yeah, they don't want sidewalks because they don't want to pay an addition eighty thousand dollars or whatever it is to put that sidewalk in. So they reduced the cost of the house by not putting in the sidewalks. And then later on, they come back, maybe four, five, six years later, now all of a sudden they want the city to put the sidewalks in, so I have a problem with that.
Can I address that? Is that a question? If you want to address.
Yes, okay. And thank you for that question, that's a legitimate question, there's a difference. These people can't come back and ask the city to put sidewalks on their private property. This is not a public street, it's not a public right of way, it's private property. So we, we're installing it across the public right of way, that, that's in the ordinance and we have agreed to do that, it's not very long and it honestly doesn't connect. There's not a sidewalk truly within along Acton Road the entire length, there's a quarter mile sidewalk that's two miles away, there's just not sidewalks out there, but in this case, these people could not come back and ask you to do it legally, period, because the city doesn't own the ground, these, it's their private property, private easement.
Additional comments?
Mr. President, this is Counsel Lewis, I'm curious, we've heard a lot about what Mr. Sheets has said and what our Director of D P W has shared, by any chance, do we have any documentation that supports what has just been shared with us?
Please, Mr. Rutherford.
I have the email, I have an email that I have given to a few people, I'm happy to read that, or one of the counselors who's received that, if that would be more believable, I'm happy to have them read it into the record, whichever you'd prefer.
It, it's not about, I, I'm not trying to question you in a manner that.
You haven't had that handy, Counsel Boots, that I'd sent something, I think I sent that copy to you.
Counsel Lewis is still, still speaking. Would you repeat your comment, please?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. President, I was just saying, it's, it's one thing to hear it from the presenter, I would like to have something tangible because you're saying something that is opposite of what we've been told, and so I don't know who the they are, and I haven't heard from Director Parker stating that positions have been changed at this point. So outside of any additional, I mean, is there any additional information that can be shared with?
If it would be helpful, I'm happy to read this email, first of all, I don't know that I was sworn tonight, but I swear to you and everyone else in this room that I am telling the truth. And if I'm not, you can find me, I, my address is eighty-eight oh one Southeastern Avenue. This was a question, this issue with this entrance was never raised by staff, never raised by D P W, and quite frankly, would not have been raised had we not had the COVID delays where we had, we went ahead on our own and applied for a driveway cut. That's the only reason this review happened, never did somebody say that we needed an X L, D cell, or a passing blister. All was ever asked was the reviewer on our. All was ever asked was the reviewer on our driveway permit application said, do you guys need this? Do you need this on a private driveway? And so we, Kathleen brought it up in her staff report as a question. And we asked Nathan Sheets to review it, and I have an email from Nathan Sheets dated June the first of twenty twenty, twelve oh six PM, nathan sheets@fromindy.gov. Kathleen, this is the Kathleen Blackham, who's our planner on the case. Due to the small number of lots and the limited traffic along Acton Road, I do not see much of a benefit in the construction of the typical XL D cell lanes and our passing blister at this location. As the likelihood of a diminished level of service is small. Neither Indian Creek Road, Southport Road, McGregor Road, or Maze Road, which are the other roads around there, have any such feature. I have CC George, which is George Crock with, at this time it was BNS or NBS, who would be involved in the permitting of the infrastructure. Please let me know if you have any further questions or concerns. And that issue went away, Kathleen testified at the hearing of the MBC that that issue had been resolved.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mister President, I just wanted to ask, is there anybody from staff that's on that may be able to speak to it? One collaborate that he, you know, has communicated with Nathan Sheets and that was the response they got.
Mister President, Council, Matt Pleasant, I'm the Administrator of Current Planning. Here with you. There's I, I can go over some of these comments I've made or any questions that you have specifically. Regarding what Nathan Sheets from DPW has presented, yeah, he did agree that the XL and D cell lanes were not required in their end. However, planning, we, we just have a different set of philosophies, it's not a bad thing, there's just two different honestly, two different difference of opinion, it's okay, we happen, it happens sometimes and we we, we work together very well, most of the time we're on the same philosophy. For this situation, we understand that Acton Road is an arterial street. Which, which anticipates, which is currently or anticipates in the future to be a high a lot of cars driven on those roads for our tiered system. So currently Acton Road may not have the, the amount of traffic such as thirty eighth street, for instance. But, but it is planned that in the future that one day that will happen at that point in time, that street would most likely be widened. However, those widening and those are come through DPW. At that time, they decide that traffic is enough, they will widen those streets. For us and our rationale of thinking of why we would like to see the XL D cell lanes is specifically for, for at the time when those, when that traffic does pick up. And that could be a few years from now, it could be ten years from now, but we want to make sure that the safety of the citizens coming in and out of those that development is, is, is accounted for. Most of the time DPW will have a list of, of projects that when they have to do the expanding of the roads. You have to understand too, is that they have to acquire the land if it's not already been given to the city. And that is also a choice that if the city actually wants to do that, because that means they have to pay for it. Sometimes they just wait for it. And other times, this is just, and other times they'll just go for it. Most of the time that they do expansion of roads, and I don't want to necessarily speak for DPW for this matter, but it is my historic belief that, understanding that a lot of the times it comes from federal funds, if not some other means of, of capital improvements. So with that, that, that's, that's all I have to say about the A so D so.
Thank you, Mister President. We'll proceed then, thank you, Mister Rutherford. I will now call on the remonstrators to state their case.
Mister President? Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Thank you, I did just one, one quick question, not directly related to what we were talking about. I'm curious, the presenter pointed out that there'd be a lot of trees retained in the development. Could he comment on the trees that are there currently and the amount that will be removed?
Is my mic still on? Okay, thank you. Roughly, there's about seven and a half acres of trees on the thirty-two acre parcel. There's sort of a rectangular block that's up in one corner that will be the rear yards of several of these longer lots. Intentionally, and there's, there are setbacks within there to keep the houses. If anything, just in the very edge of those woods and the way the septic systems will work, they need to be in the front of that area, out of the woods anyway. Then there's a treed corridor that quite honestly, one of the reasons I fell in love with this piece of ground from the beginning is it's just an incredibly unique piece of topography, it's probably fifteen to twenty feet down to the creek itself, it's a hundred and fifty feet wide. As a kid, I would have loved to have something like that to be playing in the backyard in a treehouse there. And we designed these lots to back up to that creek to preserve it. And, and that's what we're doing, again, none of those trees will be touched, we have to cut through the, the front edge of it to get a, a bridge to get across to, to, to make the driveway work through there. But none of the trees on the, on the rest of those lots, none of the trees in these backyards are going to be touched in the development whatsoever. Other than two spots, we have to cut through a row, a ridge of trees to be able to install the driveway. I'm estimating ninety-eight percent of the existing trees that are on that site will be preserved. And if this was developed as a typical subdivision, which would, which is what would have to happen if we built this to the, to the subdivision control standards, for fancy to make it work. We would have to clear the entire site to make it drain, it just doesn't drain to city standards. We, we've designed a unique situation that works with these large lots because you get credit for the grass on the new lots. If this was hard surface and all these lots were tied in to typical density eighty to ninety homes on this, we would have to clear the entire site and re, and change all the topography, which would destroy every bit of the beauty of this site.
Ethan Evans.
Thank you, Mister President, I was just going to follow up on the environmental impact that was mentioned. But presenter did mention a bit of that. I just wanted to know if there was any other environmental impacts that were mentioned in the agreements that needed to be followed up with, aside from the trees.
Actually, the, the interesting thing about this creek is because the upstream area that drains through it is so small, it's not even floodplain. So we, we didn't have a situation where DNR was involved, there's no evidence of any wetlands in there whatsoever, we've had that analyzed, there's nothing there. Frankly, it's a really clean, unusual piece of property and had the guy that owned it not just loved the woods and wanted to hunt in them until he was ready to sell it. It had been, probably been cleared and farmed a long time ago, but if this was left and that's what we're trying to take advantage of is the unique beauty of the site. But there's not any other environmental issues that we're aware of.
Thank you, counselors. I will now call on the remonstrators to state their case. And again, remember that you have only twenty minutes total for your presentations, regardless of speakers participate. You may not use the full twenty minutes or to save a portion of it for rebuttal. Our clerk will keep track of the time. And a buzzer will sound when your time is up. If you do not use a portion of your time, our clerk will record the amount you have remaining for rebuttal. I believe this is either Mister or Mrs. Gillespie, Gillespie?
Yes, my name is Andrew Gillespie. I live at sixty-eight thirty-one Acton Road, I've been a resident of Franklin Township for twenty-eight years and lived in Indianapolis for fifty-eight years. I want to thank each, each of you for your time to listen to this matter. I further want to thank the excellent city employees at the Department of Metropolitan Development and members of the Metropolitan Development Commission for their work on this effort. I was told, getting of this process, sewers were coming to our street, which would mean it's just a matter of time before someone builds something worse than this addition that could devalue our homes. I tried to call the Citizen Synergy and they told me that there was nothing on the plans for that, but I could never confirm it. We were told that the people downtown, meaning the city government, was pushing hard to put in high-density housing project in that location, and we need to move quickly to stop them in support of this variance. I attempted to question the developers' proposal and immediately felt hopeless to tell my concerns of drainage and traffic safety. We continually had been pressured throughout the process not to remonstrate our concerns because everyone would not like us and the developer, developer would lose money. After working with the, the, the staff and the commission, I found caring professionals, experts in their field. They follow the rules, ensure well-planned and vibrant community would be developed. We were not pressured and we were respected and listened to. With that being said, I want to thank, thank them for their effort. The DMD staff had already addressed many of our concerns, recommended denial of the proposal and follow the rules of, of the remonstrate, we participated in every process and, and the MDC did deny this proposal. Two weeks later, a request for a rehearing was made and they denied that in support of the staff report. Now we're here for you tonight, ask your support, the Metropolitan Development Commission staff and the Metropolitan Devil Commission, Development Commission, to deny this proposal. Like to start with, if I could, to bring up the proposal.
Please.
Is I have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that could be brought forth, I don't know if that could be made.
Have you submitted it to, to our staff?
I have.
Right.
I said it two weeks ago when, and I shared, is it something maybe I could do through share screen possibly?
Hold the clock for just a moment, please. Okay. Very good, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Dealing with the Bossy Creek proposal, on the second slide, I want to bring point that the staff report did deny the proposal. They denied the proposal even after several of the items. There were only two of the eleven things that the staff wanted in compliance that were found to be in compliance, eighty percent of it was not. My screen here, I'm having a little trouble, there we go. DMB planning staff did review it again, denied the recent supplement changes made by Mossy Creek prior to today's hearing. And they did deny it yet again, as primarily because there's just a lack of infrastructure. And I think even by Mister Rutherford's statements, it would support that we just have a lack of infrastructure in this area and that's really what our concern is. Also, I was questioning why was the proposal was actually brought before here, there, there really wasn't any dispute of the facts. The MDC properly heard the case, we didn't omit evidence. We, the proposal was legally denied and nothing would say that we shouldn't be doing this. So let's go to the, the next slide. That the previously agriculture tires, tiles causing active road to crack and bulge. This area was essentially a marsh or a swamp eighty years ago and the farmers had to put a drainage tile so it could be farmed. Well, what I'm saying is inadequate infrastructure is causing active road to dangerously buckle and bulge. And who's going to pay for those repairs? Assuming the increased liability for damage for the due of endless variances and conflict with the approved comprehensive plan of the city. DND is trying to prove our community and needs your support. There's all sorts, every so many feet, the road is buckling up, just like this picture shows. This newly installed drainage tile on the next slide where it talks about two-to-one slopes for roadside ditches are not recommended by NDOT. In their design manual, under section forty-nine, non-recoverable slopes is a two-to-one slope, which means it can be assumed a vehicle will continue to travel the bottom of the slope. Well, I put, I took a picture, I put a yardstick from the white line going to the ditch. And you can see that stick sticking out, so it's just a matter of inches before you're in a non-recoverable going into the ditch. So what if a school bus runs off the road with no room for correction? There will be serious injury or death to the kids. Who's going to assume the liability for that? This is right at the entrance of where this proposal is going to be. And there's, and Nathan Sheets said that there was no need to put in a cell D cell lane. And there was nothing on active road when I can show you that there's a bubble and a D cell lane. And on Southport and Active Road, they widened the street to eleven feet at the bridge just at south of Indian Creek. And there is a large entrance to a housing addition down the street that widens the road, has a A cell D cell lane. So it, it in fact does have of this, the street is a thoroughfare. And their traffic increases every day because there's several new additions that have been already planned there. And there's Acton Elementary School and the Middle School East that gain access all there, including I seventy-four. So this is a busy thoroughfare, we got this big ditch and there's no place anywhere to go. You can even see, I took a picture, that erosion has already begun on this project that was completed on May twenty-ninth this year. So there's still water issues and the road is sloughing, it's going to cause a problem because it's too steep a ditch. And I just want to, you know, after this new installation of stormwater that, excuse me, on active road, that Mossy Creek Farms will be at the top of the hill with no shoulder, as you can see. DPW, DPW engineers gave waiver for no S acceleration and deceleration lanes for a passing list because there's limited traffic and other active roads intersections, which they do have. Active Road is a thoroughfare and this was against the staff report recommendation. So this is why the staff report said to do it, they went out, they look at it, they did their homework and they said what's safety for the street. After Rose, as I say, it's been a thoroughfare, it's, the next slide, it's been declared a thoroughfare, Main Street, it's become very busy connecting road. And right now, there's no, nowhere to go for emergency vehicles to pass. Or if you break down, walk and want to ride a bike. If you're just riding your bike, and I used to like my ride to bike on active road. But if you can't even ride safely, people with the two cars going down the road, you, there's no place for a shoulder. There's no place for a sidewalk, no space to widen the road or enhancements. And no space for future bike lanes or other enhancements without a lot of money being spent by the taxpayers. So we're adding more infrastructure, we're, we're not adding the infrastructure, we're building more houses, just like Counselor Gray was mentioning about, this is going to be a problem down the road, it's going to cost the taxpayer, taxpayers one way or another. The next slide, talking about the flooding, back on the tenth of August, we had a, a fair amount of rain, but no, no way of a large rain. This is a picture of the new drainage tile ditch, it's supposedly going to take all the water away across the street. And according to the new plan, going to drain all the water from the other street, this, that's declared a swamp, to drain out for this area. This location is the opposite side, the pipe can't handle the rain runoff now. What will happen when you add another existing swamp, sixteen plus house, houses, destruction of existing agricultural tile on the east side of the street and five existing homes. This, this rain is standing in the yards, it's standing in the ditch. And now, after I've been arguing for all these many months, the last, since the last meeting, Mossy Creek Farms now has acknowledged that our concerns, that there, there is flooding and they are saying that they're going to fix it just to get our approval. Well, again, if, if it is going to fix it, I don't, I need to see assurances on it. And there's no way you can with his, there's with the plan that we're talking about. This is a major project to deal with the water, I go to the next slide. Again, this shows active roads flooding, see all the waters coming into the roadway, continues to flood, new storm water have been installed, the drain's not working. It's causing erosion, the pavement's failing and cracking, multiple field tiles have been cut beneath the roadway causing the buckle. Road is in very poor condition from I seventy-four south to Acton Road due to poor drainage, overweight vehicles, excessive traffic due to the road having been on thoroughfare. And that's today, that's happening today. The next slide, this is the other side of the street, sixty-eight thirty Acton Road, stormwater drain was not completed as the original plan suggested, and then the flooding continues on down the road. We'll go to the next slide. I want to show you the background, the backyard of, or the back of the addition, this is the approximate border where Mossy Creek Farms would be from the back of, of my address. And on seven AM on the eighth, or the, excuse me, the tenth of August, this was the field runoff of the properties. At sixty-eight nineteen, sixty-eight thirty-one, sixty-eight forty-three and sixty-eight fifty-five Acton Road. This flooding did not occur at this location prior to previous variances against the comprehensive plan. That, you know, so who knows what's going to happen, but this is what's happening right now. That, you know, so who knows what's going to happen, but this is what's happening right now. This is the runoff that's coming that is going to be fixed supposedly with this addition. And run it up through a pumping system into a drainage tile across the street. They couldn't withstand the water that it has right now. So you can see my concerns. The next picture is uh this wet again after the variances. Uh this is sixty-eight nineteen, sixty-eight thirty-one, sixty-eight forty-three, sixty-eight fifty-five acting road where normal has been normally wet six to seven months a year, then started when these tiles were gone. The west side of acting road early into two thousand due to the previous variance approval against the comprehensive plan. So let me just to sum up, but I want to point a couple of issues out here. Uh for the second time, I want to speak to three of the eleven changes made of the Mossy Creek proposal. They remind you that the D M D staff still denies this project even with the eleven changes that are being left in the plan. Uh on number three, the pre-existing drainage pipes, it does not allow for the ocean of water to be run underneath acting road. Uh remind reminder, the city pipe insulation completed in May of this year is already failing per our photo presentation. This is prior to our new homes being built and any swamp wire on this side. Shifting responsible back responsibility back to the new houses and existing owners and potentially damaging property property instead of the builders. Builders will be long gone and the task to identify exactly where the damage is uh was pre-existing lines uh will require considerable sprints of environmental engineering research and recommendations and additional legal fees for existing a new property orders to settle tens of thousands of dollars of more damaging repairs. We know that we know this to be accurate because we've experienced damage from the zoning variance granted to build up on the west side since the two thousand. We had no previous flooding at our residence from nineteen fifty-five to two thousand and four. The cost to fully repair water damage to our property, our home foundation has been over fifty thousand dollars. That's even for walls don't collapse and that remains a current risk. Uh while committed equipment is added to Mister and Mrs. Weida and Mister and Mrs. Prather to inspect construction proposal the site, it does not provide a resolution or mechanism uh or a performance clause. If damages are identified in pre-existing lines, it does not provide any obligation for the builder part to correct and assume all cost repair, reroute lines and stipulation of performance. Likewise, it does not cover the damages to the properties on the east or west side of active road regarding newly installed lines by the builder and backup overwhelming by the water system. They can't drain to the newly installed city pipe on the west side of the street. So I just want to sum up my presentation originally at this point, although the last slide. The staff report denied it. The Metropole Development Commission legally heard the case and they denied it. Even after several waivers were granted, only two of the eleven requirements were in compliance. That's less than twenty percent success, over eighty percent not in compliance. The D M D staff did review and again denied this recent supplement changes by Mossy Creek Farms prior to today's hearing. In summary, the modifications did not substantially change compliance, which established existing city county ordinances for such a project, which means lacking existing infrastructure. Why was this proposal brought before the City County Council? Is there dispute of facts? Did the M M D C improperly hear the petition? exclude or admit evidence or did the law change after the M D C legally denied proposal? Was there anything regarding this position which suggested a prejudice existed on behalf of the city of Indianapolis? Should the tax taxpayers pay for this? The answer should be no and so should be yours. Thank you.
In keeping with the amount of uh opportunity we have for questions from counselors. Petitioner, are there any questions? Uh counselors, um I I'm I'm told by uh by my uh by our council that I have to ask for you for consent to uh to get your questions. Um because usually we we hold those until the end on this. But I do think this is an important uh important case that has been postponed. I believe it's twice already. So with consent.
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 Alright, very good, very good. Um I see two hands up. Um Counselor Jones.
Thank you, President. Um thank you. I just had a question. How many other residents or neighbors are uh in a are remonstrating along with you?
I'm the only one left. Yep, we had we had several, but they've uh each one has been met individually and their individual concerns were met and a comprehensive plan was not met. And I believe that we should be doing this a comprehensive plan. By uh building this project, it's actually going to land lock uh our street. Uh so we can't make it a a nice thoroughfare. Uh won't be able to widen it for bike lane sidewalks. Uh it's just going to be stuck at the nineteen and a half foot road and because there's li- literally no place to go. There's not even a place room enough to put a shoulder in. So that's what we're trying to do is not to land lock this area. And so other folks are trying to take care of some concerns they have and uh I'm trying to support what the city is uh proposed. I'm supporting the Metropolitan Belt Commission and I'm supporting the staff report.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh just a question for Mr. Gillespie. If you could please share with us, what was your position on not participating in the mediation process that's established for uh trying to resolve exactly these type of issues?
Well, sir, that is not true. We did participate. We did it by letter. Uh I had a daughter who had had a COVID exposure and we had to quarantine herself. And I was told there was no opportunity for us to up the work in this type of environment where you could do it by WebEx or Zoom. And so we did it by letter. We were told that was appropriate. Now I'm being told that we didn't participate. So I I don't really understand why we're being accused of this. But it's also uh common to this process. We've been accused of many things we didn't do.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. President.
Very good. Um I see Counselor Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question um maybe for Mr. Pleasant. Um those photos of of flooding were concerning, especially if that flooding didn't occur in years prior. It looks like maybe there's some drainage issues. You know, I appreciate the um you know, care for the trees in the area, but I am concerned about the flooding. Um Mr. Present, may I ask that question of Mr. Pleasant?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Pleasant. What are the issues with regard to drainage? Um that plant like what would be the role of planning other than just denial? Are there mitigation efforts in ongoing in this area? Maybe that would be in the Department of D P W or uh or other departments. Um you might not be able to speak to that, but any any insight would be helpful to me as I make my decision. Thank you.
Yeah. Um I we so planning definitely acknowledges that there's a drainage problem in this area. Uh wetlands and what have you. However, um the Department of Business Neighborhood Services, they reviewed drainage permits. And we obviously are going to defer to their permits as long as they meet the engineering code uh that that take care of the drainers that are on site. Now, just for your benefit, the development is required to a any water that's on site, they have to keep it on site and that they're allowed to if it drains, it has to go to lesser rate than it was than it was on there. So if anything comes that it doesn't look like it would possibly happen from the outside of the street based on those ditches. But if there was water runoff, they are required to catch that, hold it, and then they're allowed to to put it through uh a legal drain or drain it out at a lesser rate. I'm sure Mr. Rutherford can easily answer some of those questions since he deals with that on a regular basis, but uh we typically trust the engineering department and uh business neighborhood services when it comes to drainage permits.
Thank you very much. No further questions, Mr. President.
Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is for Mr. Gillespie. You know, you you showed us a lot of pictures of drainage issues um in this presentation and the other, you know, concerns of biking and emergency vehicles on the road. You know, I would just like you to confirm that even without this new development on Acton Road, that those issues are still going to remain. And, you know, a chance to get them resolved is with this new development. Um so could you please confirm that for me about the issues remaining without the development?
Okay, I want to make sure I understand your question. You're you're saying that this will help? Is that what you're saying? Are you making a statement or?
I'm asking you to confirm that without the development, these issues on Acton Road remain.
Uh what I'm saying is it would be magnified by the having an entrance where you have sixteen homes trying to come in and out of a top of a hill where there's literally eight to nine inches on either side of the roadway for cars not to see them. I mean, it's 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 gonna it's gonna you run off the road, cars are going to crash. Uh traffic is going to be increased because they're there. The traffic on active road is going to increase. Uh it's you can't fit more than two cars on the street right there. Then when someone pulls out in front of them, they try to swerve to miss the car that pulled out in front of them inadvertently. They're going to go into the ditch. It's a non-recoverable slope. That means they're going to go in the ditch and there's going to be loss of life or injury. Who's going to pay for that damage? Who's going to pay for that? I mean, is is that good? But when I read the proposal, is everything goes back on the homeowners and they're going to have to be responsible for that? Or is it the city is going to be responsible for that? That's I don't really know the answer. I'm not an attorney, but someone's going to be responsible uh running off the road when there's no place to go when you're pulling out in front of somebody and there's no shoulder and there's a a unrecoverable uh steep sleep uh ditch. I mean, you figure out sixteen houses, at least two cars per house coming and going during working times. And then let alone the buses going in and out of there or any other things that we could delivery vehicles uh emergency vehicles. I mean, it people are going to be coming into that location. It's at the top of the hill. It's blocked by the trees that we're trying to save and I appreciate that. But the road's too narrow. That's really what it comes down to. And there's no any way that anybody's going to see him until it's too late. People fly up and down active road. I wish they wouldn't. But the speed limit's forty. Usually it's in the sixty range uh uh in my my experience. And we tried everything in can to slow it down, but it's a long road. There's no place for anybody to stop. Does that answer your question, sir?
Uh I believe so. I mean, it it sounds like you believe that the additional thirty-two cars will se- severely impact the safety of this road near that intersection.
Yeah, when they're coming uh during the road, they're trying to slow down and there's a car coming up you sixty mile an hour and he doesn't stop in time. He's going to ram it back to that car and push him into the ditch. Or they're going to have to swerve and go into a ditch. People are going to get hurt. I can guarantee you that.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie.
Very good. Uh Counselors, did you have another comment?
Yes, if I just a very quick question for Mr. Uh Gillespie, if I may.
Please.
Uh Mr. Gillespie, on the the map that we have, that was part of uh the petitioner's presentation, can you show us or point to where your property is relative to the proposed plot?
Okay, I don't have your map, so I'm going to have to bring it up.
There's one. Is that a proper map for you?
Yeah, uh well, the the one that you originally had with the red, uh that would be my location i- in the middle of it. Yeah, right there. Now, again, I'm not, uh you know, necessarily speaking on just my behalf, I'm talking about general safety concerns and general drainage concerns. I've tried to limit my concerns beyond my personal residence. These are things that need to be addressed. I'm trying to support with the Metropolitan Development Commission and the staff report has said we need to do.
So i- is your property then is Acton Road immediately um to to the east or to the right looking at this red dot on this map?
Uh Acton Road would be on the right.
So that's Acton Road right there.
Yeah, so I'm on the same side of the street as the addition that's being proposed.
Got you. And this is a
For some reason, my neighbor next door uh uh is also uh remonstrated that he wasn't liquid on there. So actually, there's two uh people, but he's not wanting to speak publicly.
So your your property is just a little south of the proposed entrance to this new development?
Yes, sir, with a natural run up water runoff will be because water generally runs from north to south. And what they're proposing is to run the water with pumps and system from south to north into this pipe, which also causes us concerns.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. President.
Very much, Counselor Nate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick clarification. Uh it would appear that there was a mixed messaging. One side said Mr. Gillespie did not participate in the mediation process. Mr. Gillespie said he did. Uh does our staff have an attendance record or something to be able to uh to be able to answer that question? Definitely. He did not attend. Okay, thank you.
Could I make a point of that, Mr. President?
Um just a moment. I think we have a question. Is that Counselor Fox? Did you have a question?
If I might really quickly, Mr. President. Um with with regard to the sidewalks, if we could just get some clarification on uh the the future of the sidewalks within the neighborhood, will they be permanently a part of the private infrastructure within the neighborhood? Or is there a possibility that there will be an expectation that the city maintain those sidewalks in the future? I would just love to get some uh clarification on that point. Thank you.
Did you want me or Mr. Rutherford to answer that?
Whoever m- might have the the most appropriate answer to it, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. President, could you unmute the podium? I think those of us that are virtual are having trouble hearing.
Alright. Mr. Rutherford, would you uh would you start your answer again, please? Can you hear him now?
Looks like it's unmuted. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. No, this the area beside the driveway is private property. It's an easement that's shared by these people. It is not owned by the city. The city would never be in a position to be asked or demanded to put those public sidewalks in there, period. I mean, that's just not we we will install them across the public right away because that's an obligation that we bond and install as a part of the development. But there would there would not be sidewalks installed on the internal site area unless those residents elected to put some sort of a trail through along the edge of that. And frankly, our experience with those is that a twenty-foot wide paved driveway, if people want to walk along the edge of that, that's what they do. There's only sixteen homes. It's not like there's going to be traffic through there that's going to bother them. So that's how that's how it works.
Thank you, Mr. President.
With comments.
Um President Andy Gillespie again. Can I speak to the point about the remonstration?
Sure, you go ahead and then we'll we will then come back to Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, sir. Uh we were instructed by Miss Angela Gonzalez that a letter of remonstrance that we submitted would be satisfying our participation in the mediation. So if you'd like the documentation for that, I'd be be happy to provide it to you, sir. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a question for Matt Pleasant. What is the current zoning of the property? I thought I may have heard that this thing is zoned for residential subdivision residential.
Oh, it is on DA, which is dwelling. Oh, it is on DA, which is Dwelling District Agriculture.
So how many homes is that put on an acreage?
These, DA requires, there, there can be homes, they have to have some sort of frontage, so along a public street and they are primarily toward agriculture. That's why this, this development's kind of going back behind. It, as a DA right now, Mr. Rutherford or anybody for that matter would not be able to develop under a DA zoning. They would have to rezone to something else if they wanted to add more lots the way that this is kind of been cut up.
Okay, and Mr. President, if I could ask one question to the petitioner. I think he used 90 in his speech. Were you getting a number of 90 homes based on the current zoning?
My wife would love to get this control for me. Right now, under the DA zoning, he's correct. This area is developed. All the road frontage around this site is developed, so we, that's what kind of stuck with the infill that's left. If it was developed as street or tracks, it would be 10. But as soon as sewers become available, this style of development goes away. That's the reality. And we would not push it. If sewers were available, then we would come back and zone this D2 or D3 based on, they'd have to change the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan would allow up to five units an acre on 32 acres. We estimated 75 to 90 homes is what could be built on there someday when sewers are available, if it's not developed for this type of a use before sewers are available.
Counselor Mr. Ray.
Thank you, President. You know, I would tend to support this if they would put the XL and Dcel in. The drainage issue around Indianapolis is like, it's everywhere. And I think they will, you know, address that issue. Are they willing to put in the Dcel and XL?
Let's make sure your mic is on.
Is there a way if I look at this, I can tell it's on the bottom left corner? Okay, I'm not smart enough for that. Again, the problem is that to ask us to put the XL Dcel in, one, DPW is the expert on the street design and safe entries. They're the ones who issued a permit. And the guy who issues that driveway cut permit has already been told by his boss at DPW that he's approved this without that being necessary. There is not a safety benefit from that. And the problem is, we don't own the ground on either side of this entrance. So to do an XL Dcel lane always requires the cooperation of these abutting property owners to be able to put this in. And typically, in cases I've had in the past, if the abutting property owner will not cooperate, then the city works with us in some compromise to make it as good as we can. And that's kind of what we've done here. We're not just having this be a 24-foot wide drive at the entrance. We've got an exaggerated flare that uses up 90% of the 50 feet we have. It just isn't a full XL Dcel lane. I mean, if you're telling me that, that we gotta agree to do that, to do it, I mean, to get it done, I want to get the case approved. I would agree to try, but I can't force these property owners on either side of the entrance to give up some of their front yard to let us do it. And it's kind of tough to do it when your expert from DPW has said we don't need it.
Well, I, I would support it. I would support it if you had that done. I honestly, Mr. Gillespie has some gripes about the drainage, but more likely, I, I've been down Acton Road several times. I go down, see Mr. Kite, then we crash a car. But I would support it if you could put the XL and Dcel in. Thank you.
Let us go forward then. The visitor was advertised for a public hearing and I will now call anyone in attendance who is not associated in any way with either the remonstrator or petitioner for public comment. If you have a letter or email or signed a petition via the remonstrator or petitioner, or if you are a neighborhood resident who has already been represented by a chosen spokesperson, your comments would have to be included in the remaining time allotted for your battle. Comments are limited to two minutes per individual and once again, our clerk will be setting the timer so that you will know when your time is up. Please be respectful of the time and conclude your comments when you hear the buzzer. So we'll begin by checking with Clerk Hughes for any comments provided by anyone watching online. Madam Clerk, have we received any comments online?
Mr. President, there were no comments for this proposal.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't know if there's anyone in the public assembly room that would like to speak to this proposal. All right. We have no one in the room that wishes to speak to this proposal. So, Mr. Rutherford, you have the balance of your 20 minutes for a rebuttal of previous comments. And Madam Clerk, can you remind the petitioner of the time that he has remaining?
Yes, he has seven minutes, or seven minutes and 10 seconds left.
Thank you.
Well, I can talk fast. I tried to save enough time here because I was afraid this would happen again. This is exactly what happened at the MDC hearing. Is that because of the COVID scenario, we were all at a distance. The remonstrator went through their position and about 90% of the stuff that they've talked about today is absolutely irrelevant to this project. But he created enough confusion and turned this around that we weren't able, not able to fix it in the time that we had under the COVID scenario. So let me tell you the truth from our perspective. And first of all, this could have all been solved if they'd allowed us to get in the same room and negotiate this and discuss this, get their answers, their questions answered. I think a lot of this would have gone away. But the reality is, every bit of that water that he showed you pictures of does not flow through our property. Not one drop of it. And that's sad because we have paid our engineers tens of thousands of dollars and sent them the drainage basin drawings that show them that 95% of their water doesn't even flow towards us. It flows in a completely different direction. The $400,000 drainage project that the city just put in across Acton Road has diverted the water that, some of which used to flow through our property. They did our residents a great favor, quite frankly, thanks, thanks to the city. And I appreciate what they did because it was really hard to do it in the newer right of way they had there. But they put it in. Most of the residents on there and, on there are actually very thankful of that. And as someone whose property benefited from that, I want to say thank you as well. That $400,000 solved a problem that had been there a long time, but that water does not flow through us. But just to show you that I'm a man of my word when I said that we're trying to be kind to them. If this case is approved, that one picture they showed you of the bean field behind their house that has water in it, that's legitimately a low spot. It does not flow through us at all, but we have asked our engineers to see if there's a way that can be solved and we will put a pipe in there to drain that. We figured out a way to do it. It's not an extravagant cost. We will try to help. Despite the problems that we've had here trying to get resolution with these people. It's not personal. They, they're afraid of this. They want to stop things. But in the end, this stuff about the water has nothing to do with us. The city has looked at our drainage plans. The water that does come through us, we are handling in total compliance with the laws and those have been approved awaiting permits. The only issue that is a drainage problem that we are fixing is south, east, give my directions right here, east of our project, which is downstream. There is currently a deficient drainage system in an older subdivision that was put in 50, 60 years ago. We're gonna help that tremendously because that water is flowing unretained across our acreage and through this project and it's flooding some people. And we're gonna fix that. That's why that subdivision is so easy to talk into this. As soon as they understood what we were doing, they're like, sign us up. You don't have to pay for this. The city didn't have to pay for it. You guys are gonna solve it. The other thing with that water in the city's drainage project, there was a problem with that project. They ran into a fiber optics line. So it didn't get extended as far in, towards these last couple of homes that were supposed to benefit as it should have. We have had our engineers identify that as well. And as one of the commitments we have in here, we're gonna solve that. We're going to allow these people who have been flooded for 20 years, have drainage systems that go through their basements that are destroying their house. We figured out a way, again, not extravagant expense, and work with the neighbor to get an easement through there to run a new drainage line to them to allow the city's system to work as originally planned. Doesn't affect the Gillespies at all because not one shadow of that water goes to their property as well. But it did confuse the MDC and I hope it didn't confuse you guys because it has nothing to do with our case whatsoever. As to our entry, we had our engineers provide the Gillespies, the line of sight data. We're, we're clean and safe at 60 miles an hour. The speed limit on Acton Road is 40. People do speed on Acton Road occasionally. They do it because there's so little traffic that they have the ability to speed. Nobody speeds on these heavily trafficked roads because they can't. But they do occasionally speed on Acton Road. But there's, it's because there's so few traffic. That's why Nathan Sheets had no problem with our entrance because the traffic service is one of the highest levels of service that's left in the entire county. And based on the fact that most of that corridor is already developed out with these large lot homes, we actually don't anticipate a lot of increase in that in the next 40, 50 years. What else do I have here? From my end of it, I think the hardest thing about this case, I've learned a lot on this case, but there's been so much here that I've not been able to solve. And that's frustrating for me because I make a living listening to people. Being kind, solving problems I can solve, but you can't solve problems when people won't talk to you. And that is the question here. I hate it that we've got people in the remonstrance phase here at this hearing on one of my cases that's been going on for a year and a half that still thinks that some of these issues are relevant to our case or that we're doing something that bad to them. We're not gonna affect them at all. This traffic doesn't go by their house. The entrance is 1,200, 1,300 feet away from their home. I don't have the exact number, but it's clear at the far end of that map you showed, they're clearly far away from their house. I, I don't know what we could have done other than, they have a one acre track. They were there first. They did tell us at one of the initial meetings that the houses on seven acre lots across Acton Road from them really bothered them and they didn't want anybody else to come out there. I get that, but this is Marion County, it's Indianapolis. We have the right, we have property rights too. And so we have tried to everything we can do to provide them information, again, spent way more than typically is ever spent before a zoning hearing to provide them the truth and they will not listen. And that's frustrating from my end of it. But we're gonna do them the favor anyway of solving the drainage problem that we can solve of theirs. I did want to clarify that our paving of this drive, the ordinance gives any paving job a year from the date of approval to be paved. In our case, we're gonna put the paving in on the front 310 foot of this to 24-foot wide section. We're gonna put that in as part of our initial development before the project is ever, importantly, lots are even sold. And the rest of that will be paved with the first coat, which is the binder coat, within one year. We will take advantage of that year to let the gravel trucks and the, sorry, the drywall trucks and the big construction equipment out there turn that basin to something that will really support asphalt. I mean, we're gonna put a good basin to start with, but we want that to work for these residents when it's ready to be paved. That's why we want to give it a year. Our drainage system is designed so that that's not gonna erode into our drainage system at all. It is designed to be safe. The edges are capped on that drive to hold the stone in, so we don't foresee that as a problem either. And we do, we're down to the point with staff where we have public sidewalks internally, public streets. They want those. We don't want to do them. We don't think they make sense. They don't hurt the city at all. This is what these residents want and it's not about cheap lots. These are very expensive to create. We just want to not, not make them unaffordable to anyone. That's the goal. Please, we ask for your support. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rutherford. I'll now call the remonstrator, Mr. Gillespie. To the development, to the rebuttal. Madam Clerk, remind the remonstrator how much time he has remaining.
Four minutes, 45 seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just, a couple of things I wanted to, to talk about this, that the reason why the flooding happened was because of the previous fairing happened across the street. We didn't have the problem before the other variances, so want you to do the other side of the street, all that infrastructure is gonna be destroyed. And they haven't addressed any of that. Those are the things that we were trying to talk about, but no one wanted to listen. Putting words in her mouth. Again, this is an example where he making assumptions that I don't want development out here. That's exactly the opposite of what we'd like to see. We'd like to see the infrastructure developed. We want to have the potential to grow this and to be a nice community, not to be landlocked and have things peace build along the line and go against the comprehensive plan and lose the value of our home. The, the safety is, it's not about our home. It's about our community. I, we look out our window and I see crashes. I see people getting killed. We had a mother killed because of a similar situation on Southport Road in May. You know, if I don't say anything and someone will get hurt on this, then that's something I have to live with. It's my responsibility to bring that to your attention, whether it makes the developer happy or not. These are things that have not been developed. It will, the proposal he's talking about will not help the system. The street still needs to be dealt with. He made a, he said in this statement that there were so few vehicles involved. And then in his opening statement, he said that there were thousands of vehicles involved. Well, let me tell you, Acton Road is a thoroughfare and it's only getting worse. I see all sorts of developments going on. I think I saw somewhere around, it's over 500 homes being developed within a few miles of this location. So there's been a lot of communications between me and this developer. It, we, we even had to hire an attorney at one point to represent our interest because of everything that was going on. So it, it's quite insulting to be told that we wouldn't participate. We've tried and we repeatedly tried, but simply they didn't want to listen. We weren't, we were refusing not to remonstrate, which I'm told if the city don't want to remonstrates, they're gonna ignore what your experts tell you what to do. So at least that's what I'm seeing and I, I don't agree with that. I think you should listen to the people that you pay to make recommendations on this stuff. And just because someone doesn't call them on it, doesn't mean it should go through. And that's really the beginning, end of my proposal. We tried to talk. We really did try. And I, if you want to see the emails, you want to see the texts, you want to see all the things that we did to try to communicate with this. And then we repeatedly told all the terrible things that we refused to this, refused to do that, and what a great guy somebody is and how terrible we are. I can see why people don't remonstrate and why they get frustrated and give up. I'm not gonna give up. Mr. Rutherford said he, he wants, he's, he's trying to make this into a battle and I don't want to make this into a battle. I never did. He emailed that to me. So we, we don't want that. So is there anything else I can answer to this other than the saying, support your folks? They've done a good job on this. There's a reason for every one of those things I could go through, but if you just look at the proposal, there are city ordinances approved by the council that they have recognized that they're act of plants with. Just because they've only met two of the 11 requirements doesn't mean that, you know, it should go through. I was always told, yeah, there might be some of them. You may not be able to get all of them, but you should make a good effort. But it's not even close to the majority. Two of 11 things and there were dozens of them that had to be done. They exempted them. They gave them waivers. All sorts of considerations were made. But they can only still, after all this, find two. I just, I, I, if I had the same thing, they wouldn't allow me to do it. I just don't understand why other people are being allowed to violate the ordinances as well. That's the end of my conclude, my conclusion. Please, please listen to me. Thank you very much for your consideration and...
I would like to have more opportunities for counsel questions and debate. But I will need consent to suspend the rules to, to, to do that. Do I have consent? Very good. Any counselor who has any questions at this point in time? Questions or comments? Counselor Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is for, I'll, I'll make it for the remonstrator. Are there existing XL Dcel lanes on the existing home entrances throughout Acton Road?
Yes, there is at New Harmony. On Acton Road, it's just south of Acton. Yes, there are.
So for every, every house going down Acton, they have these or it's just one anomaly throughout Acton Road?
There's only one housing addition. Is that what I understand your question to be, or you're saying every house?
Every house.
No, sir. Of course, every house doesn't have that.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about housing development. I mean, my understanding on these things that they have to have more than one ingress and egress. And this one just, and this one has one entrance and one exit. So all the traffic's gonna have to come out from this one exit and entrance on this one road. There's no place to go. They have to use that. All these houses have to use the same driveway.
Thank you. That was my question.
Counselor Corley now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rutherford stated that this development would not have any impact on... On on our remonstrators property and I just wanted to know um. If if that were the case from the development perspective, um or even like what staff had said. Prior to um their denial, like if this was an issue, if I would be able to hear more. Um about what our hired professionals uh said in this case.
Good.
Am I on? Can you hear?
Yes.
Um, again, their property is at least two properties away over, I think we measured it at. Twenty-five feet if I remember right.
One second, please, Mr. Um, Mr. Rutherford. Counselor Carlina.
I'm sorry. I wanted that question to be directed at our city staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Very, very good. Could you ask it again? Just just so that we're all on the same page?
Yes, um, in in the rebuttal that that Mr. Rutherford just stated, he said that there would be no impact. To the remonstrator or his property in that area. And I just wanted to be sure if that if that's true. From the perspective of our city planners.
Impact. Man, I think it goes without saying that traffic would be increased, but be that's significant or not is another is up to debate. Um, with like sixteen homes, you kind of, uh, for a rule of thumb for us is um. Three to six uh, traffic counts per house. Now, that accounts for any deliveries. People who live there coming, going, and also for the um, mail that show up to the house. So um, tr- traffic would be one that I would kind of argue for that question. The the issues that staff had were more more about, well, really the M D C as well, the Metro Development Commission were more on. Uh, based on the staff report and on. And the philosophical. It's really. Right through me off.
It's okay, Mr. Pleasant, please continue.
Which I I'm happy to go through, uh, but but other than that. I guess it's about smart development, not necessarily. Because again, I think when the drainage is a large issue, I think that drainage could be engineered out of itself. I I firmly believe that that is. Um, something that I rely on heavily with uh Business Neighborhood Services. So I I I do understand those concerns, I again, um, those, but traffic is a concern. It is fast. The A cell D cell lanes would be beneficial for this development for the safety standpoint. Mr. Rutherford has agreed to having the sidewalk along Acton Road. Uh, we greatly appreciate that. Um, it is, it is just for my benefit. We. It is extremely difficult for me to ever agree to not have a sidewalk. Um, and that is not just planning for the now, it's also playing for the future. Acton Road may not have a sidewalk up and down it, but it will someday. And uh, this would just be a segment that'd be completely uh completed, so I do uh appreciate and thank Mr. Rutherford for agreeing to that. Portion of his of his commitments.
So if you could rate it, Mr. Pleasant, thank you, on like medium, small. Um, or moderate impact, would you, would you say medium to small?
Uh, in relation to Mr. Gillespie's, I would say speculatively. Uh. Medium to small.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. President. No more, no further questions.
Thank you. Additional questions, counselors? Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um. Quick question for this might be for either uh Mr. Rutherford or possibly even pleasant. What role in what point in time would B and S's permitting come into play here? And when might they be? Uh, the authority that maybe helps make sure the drainage is okay, that the entrances is okay. Uh, try to, try to juggle all these agencies and who does what and so. Could some, maybe Matt and Mr. Rutherford, please address the B and S and role here?
So typically, uh, one will go through zoning and then one will go through plating. Mr. Rutherford for today or for this has gone through both. Which is fully allowed to do. We actually encourage it from a staff perspective so we can actually see everything that's going on. There's no, nothing hidden. Um, for that matter. So we do enjoy it when there's companion petitions for this regard. After those are approved, um, Mr. Rutherford will be required to go through what's called a secondary plat, which is like the final. Plating. So you are officially establishing those lots. Um, through the recorder's office that is reviewed by planning staff. Those are printed on special sheet called MyLars. Those are signed by both the city staff and by uh, Mr. Rutherford or whoever is the uh. The person that's going to be developing the sites or recording it, the recorder's office will also do that. Um, after that has been completed, um, the developer, I'll just say Mr. Rutherford is 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 fully capable of start pulling permits. As we would call it in our business, um, you know, contact Business Neighborhood Services with all the plans, all the fully engineered plans. You do not see those. We as staff sees, uh, I would say a lightened down version of the engineered plans. Um, but we do see those uh frequently. Um, and the B N S is going to be looking at those. If they have any questions and they do come and contact us, they do and they will contact. Uh, D P W for any of their questions and insights, but they follow a strict code of ordinances, uh, building codes. They follow strict or uh, of of engineering laws and practices. That they have to, I mean, he has to meet. And if he needs to get any adjustments for those, he is required to go ask for those adjustments, just like he does with zoning, gets variance. He has to do the same thing, at least justify himself, has to do the same thing. Most of the time, engineering though, it's you have to do. I mean, engineers, you have to meet those requirements. Um, once those are approved, uh, those buildings are ready to go up, those asphalt's ready to be poured. And um, they're ready to go. So it doesn't come back in front of me. Once it, once this is done, this doesn't come back in front of me unless it's absolutely necessary from a B and S standpoint. They have a question, but in reality, we never see it back.
If I could add just a little bit. Okay, um, he's correct that staff is sort of the big picture pre-development based on information that's known to them. Once we get through that phase, then that's when the engineers really go to work normally. In our case, what's weird about this is because we had all this time. And because we had questions with the neighbors, we have paid for and submitted full drainage plans. They have been reviewed. We've submitted secondary plans. We've got comments back from that. This is waiting permits. Same thing with the driveway design, the entrance design. We submitted the driveway cut with the design. It's been reviewed. It's been approved. We have a water line. We're running, we're running public water through this project for fire protection. We've submitted those plans to citizens. They've been reviewed. That does not go through staff. That is the permitting process through the city staff. And also with the utility companies, they have their own independent reviewing engineers. That's who we have to comply with once we get through something.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. President.
Good. Questions from counselors?
Uh, Council Ethan, can you hear me? Sorry.
Counselor Ethan Evans, please proceed.
I I have a question um regarding the XL D cell lane. So I was just looking at a map of. Acton Road and I noticed um, there are a couple of subdivisions or, you know, roads that go off of Acton. To the north of where the um proposed subdivision is going to be. It's Seminole Drive and Champagne or Charlemagne, sorry, Charlemagne Drive. To the north of the expected block that's designated for Mossy Creek. And both of those um from the street view, don't, do not have XL D cell lanes to their subdivisions. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, ask that, um, you know, if that's the case, then. Shouldn't it be fine then for the other subdivision to the south to not have the XL D cell lane? If those two subdivisions to the north do not have it on Acton Road already.
Is that a question for me?
Um, Counsel Evans, who are you directing the question?
Uh, um, Mr. Uh, I'm sorry, Matt Pleasant, sorry.
Counselor, I have an answer for some clarification. Are you asking me if? Can you please, I I need a little bit of clarity, I'm sorry.
So, uh, I know if you had said um about the XL D cell lanes being recommended, but if they were already having. Subdivisions on that road already and they didn't have XL D cell lanes, you know, would it be? Um, just okay then for another subdivision built to the south on that same road, just a few blocks south? To not have it as well?
We would ask for any further development happening on Acton Road to require XL D cell lanes.
Or whether or not an older subdivision had it.
Uh, we can't go back and ask a subdivision to do it. That'd have to be at the D P W if they want to do that themselves. Um, because we can't retroactively make somebody do something, but um, if there were a sub, a new subdivision in the future. We would ask the same thing. Specifically because this is a P U D, a D P. There, if they can meet those, um, what is, I think it's over a certain amount of lots they they have required to. Uh, in regular zoning, like D three, for in, for example, D four. Uh, zoning, they are required to, because those are subdivisions to meet the subdivision control ordinance. Because this is a planned unit development, specifically a D P development, this is something that we are requesting based off of the. Um, the the facts of the case and and obviously it's part of our policies that we wish to push for more uh safe. Roadways.
Thank you.
Respond to that at all?
Please, Mr. Rutherford, go ahead.
Okay, I'll do this real quickly. Again, um. The, my understanding was the XL D cell bypass lane was not even an issue in the initial staff report. Because we hadn't applied for a driveway cut. It only came up because the question was asked by the reviewer. During, while this case was being delayed due to COVID stuff, we submitted for a driveway cut. They asked, do they need this on a private shared drive? And the answer was, no, they do not, because there's never been this required on a private shared drive. So that's why staff dropped it at the hearing. It was never one of their issues to my understanding. It was something they were presenting. Because the reviewer had made it known that he had a question and we were asking Nathan Shees to ask it. Somehow that's turned into a big issue because it didn't get corrected in the staff report because Nathan's email didn't come in until the morning before the hearing. But she testified at the hearing, Kathy Blacken testified that it had been resolved and I think Matt has told you that it's been resolved. They'll, they'll defer to. The transportation people on that issue. Now, I would tell you that if it made a difference to the, to any significant number of views, I I want to get the case approved. We would agree if it makes a difference. To install that if the neighboring property owners will cooperate, because we do not have the power in the domain. We cannot seize their front yards to install this outside of our fifty foot area. And if they say no, we're stuck. So I mean, I can't agree to something that I can't do. I'll I'll agree to try, but if they won't cooperate, I can't fix that. But if it would make a difference, we would offer to agree to do some sort of an XL D cell to the extent we can get these property owners to cooperate and let us acquire the room to do it. If that makes a difference.
President Nosely. Could we uh, could we recommend that we approve only if he does the XL D cell only? If he gets it done?
I I've I've posed that question already to our counsel, counsel Kim, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, any conditions have to be agreed before the hearings. We cannot vote based on that condition tonight.
Does it answer you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
However, um. You can take that into account, uh, Council Mascary, um, petitioner's verbal. Commitment to make that effort, however, the official vote cannot be based on that condition. Thank you.
Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, along those same lines, that was specifically my question. Is there, uh, even though we can't formally amend the proposal. Can we add a con- condition that they report back? Can't do anything like that. Okay.
Counselor Kim, please, could you answer?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, we can't do that based on this vote.
So so any understanding like that or taking the petitioner's word, we just have to rely on that? And hope they follow through.
That's correct, Counselor. So um, similar to how I answered Council Mascary, those commitments would have had to have been. Maybe beforehand and that communicated to the petitioner beforehand, but because that's not the case here. Um, you'll have to take his word for it and take your individual vote based on that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gray.
Mr. President. Counselor Gray speaking.
Yes, Chairman Gray, please go ahead.
It's obviously that the developer doesn't have control of that property. So we can't let him do something on the pretense that he gonna do a uh, a good fake effort thing. Historically, you know, we've lost all those good faith effort things. I would suggest that, why don't we uh. Postpone it until the next meeting night and uh, see if he can get the deal done. We get the deal done, pass it. If they don't. We we get rid of it.
Counselor Kim.
The time to postpone the hearing has passed, Counselor. Um, the hearing has already occurred, so we have to vote tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Gray.
Got to do what?
Mr. President, um, to repeat myself, we have to take a vote tonight because the hearing has uh commenced and finished. The time to postpone the hearing has passed, so we must vote tonight.
Uh, I didn't hear, but I guess whatever she says.
Just a moment. Uh, Chairman Gray, can you say it one more time, please? Counselor Kim.
Counselor Gray, can you hear me?
Yeah. You know, eighty-eight, you had to speak a little louder.
Um. Okay, I'll speak a little louder. Counselor uh, Gray, we cannot postpone tonight because we've already gone through the full hearing. The time to postpone has passed. We must take a vote tonight.
Okay, the, that's what the rule is.
Alright, um, any additional comments from counselors?
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, Chairman Gray.
If we vote on this tonight and in whichever way, if it is become a negative vote. If they make the uh, get the consent of the people to make the egress and regress thing. Is it possible that they can bring it back for a new vote?
Can you ask a question? Um, Chairman Gray.
Yes.
Uh, please, your question.
If if it, if it doesn't pass tonight. Can the uh, presenters, the developers. Go to the community and get an agreement to that they can use that land to make the thing. Get, is it possible that they can bring it back?
We'd have to wait a year to repetition with the M D C. Uh, Mr. Pleasant.
Mr. President. Mr. President, if I might, um, on what uh, Counselor Gray and Counsel TK just said. Um, I believe there is an. um, I believe there is an exception that they can petition within a year um, if allowed by either the MDC or the, the commission. So uh, if Mr. Pleasant could um, it, add on to that, please?
Um, he, that is correct. We, we, we can't, he'd have to ask the, the board if he would be permitted to um, to do that. Uh, generally staff is supportive if it is a, a, um, a, a different, I, I guess, I guess if you took the same exact thing and you hear it back to us again with like two things, like one thing changed, you'd probably say no, you'd have to wait. But if it was something that like, all right, this makes sense, this will work, we, we can support something like that. That'll just take a little bit of coordination between the petition and not just Mr. Rutherford, this goes for everybody else, the coordination between us. And we've done it before, we've done it uh, recently this summer too, so yeah, I'm, I'm not against. I'm never against shorting that term.
I have a potential solution.
All right, I think this should, this will be our last comment. Mr. Rutherford?
And I am sorry, I appreciate the time you guys have taken. One of the things I'm considering is, I, I know that Councillor Mascary is, knows me a little bit and he knows one of my partners very well. And we have Councillor Maury, who is a councillor in my district, he knows me as well. Um, I'm happy if maybe we involve the two of them in the effort to negotiate with these two abutting property owners and they can witness for themselves how hard we work to try and what kind of compromise we might or not, might not be able to work out with them in good faith. I have no problem with being accountable to both of them and have them involved in this at any level they want to be involved. And I'll try, it's not a matter of money, I just don't know if they'll cooperate.
Okay, my, my, one more question, uh, what, how much are you selling these lots for? Are they fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand?
I, I think they'll, the price started in the mid eighties, it go up to about a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, so, so you can spend, what, two hundred thousand dollars on the egress, agress, right?
Well, like I said, it's, we, we think we can deal with the money, we just don't own the ground. And we can't, we don't have eminent domain powers. So if they say no, period, I, I can't fix that.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm willing to help if I can.
Okay.
Let me call the question, Mr. President?
Second?
I'm sorry, um, we still have, there actually is a, a protocol that we're gonna have to follow. And we will move on from this. Um, Councillor Maury, you have up to five minutes for closing comments and a motion, and a motion on the zoning issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I don't want to take up a lot more of our time here. I know a lot of us are tired, uh, some of us probably haven't had anything to eat yet tonight. Um, so that's gonna, that's gonna start weighing on a lot of us, I know it is me. Um, this development is one that we've seen a tremendous amount of support from with neighboring properties. And with the exception of one property, I understand some of the concerns that have been brought forward by Mr. Pleasant this evening. However, I do think that the developer and Mr. Rutherford have done their best to mitigate those problems and find solutions. Uh, not only their, his problems, but problems that were around there already. Uh, these, these problems are, they will potentially get worse. Uh, Mr. Rutherford and the developer have made a commitment to make this the best possible thing it can be in our, in our area in District twenty-five. I'm proud to support this, I know that Senator Freeman's proud to support this as well as uh, the Civic League. Um, I would ask that my fellow councillors uh, support this as well, considering that we have a tremendous amount of support from the neighboring properties and as well as um, pending Councillor Mascary. Uh, we have a, our own little subcommittee of PNI to help with the negotiation and make sure that the developers being, remaining accountable for the good faith effort of making the XL D cell lane. Um, and one of the issues I did see with the XL D cell lane, I think it's a, I can understand where the concerns are, but the other thing is like uh, Mr. Rutherford had alluded to earlier, he doesn't own the land, so he can't make that person sell land. He doesn't have the power of eminent domain to come in and take the land. It all hinders on them being willing to give up some of their land. Uh, and I know a lot of times with, a lot of people, I mean, if someone came into my front yard and said, I need, you know, any amount of footage on my front yard, I wouldn't be too happy about that. Uh, so I can understand where that may be some, you know, they may get a little caught up on that side of it, but I think in the grand scheme, this developer has done a great job of trying to work with the community around of where they're gonna, they're wanting to develop, as well as ensuring that this project meets, you know, just about all the standards that are put out there for this. Um, so with that, Mr. President, I will go ahead and make a motion. Uh, Mr. President, for the reasons I have already stated, I move that the council overturn Metropolitan Development Commission's decision to deny proposal number two-two-five twenty-twenty rezoning case, twenty-twenty dash CZN dash eight zero one, and instead adopt the petition with the amended commitments filed with the council office and the MDC. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, according to state law, three-fifths majority vote, which is fifteen votes, is required to overturn any zoning decision certified to the council by the commission. And any vote less than fifteen shall be declared as indecisive. And the proposal shall take effect pursuant to IC thirty-six dash seven dash four dash six oh eight C three. Based on Councillor Maury's motion, a yea vote will be a vote to overturn the MDC's decision and adopt the petition. A yea vote will be a vote to uphold the MDC's decision and allow the denial to stand. Would you do a roll, please?
Councillor Adamson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, a lot of times we do our homework before these things and come into this without uh, with, with an idea of how we think we're gonna vote on this. And then uh, we listen to all the testimony and things turn around and uh, so today was one of those days. Uh, so I will be voting uh, an aye to support uh, Councillor Maury's petition.
Thank you. Councillor Ane?
Councillor Ane will be voting yea.
Councillor Bain?
Councillor Bain, aye.
Councillor Barth?
Barth, nay.
Councillor Boots?
Um, if I may explain a, a little bit, I was very concerned with this initially and, and as Councillor Adamson mentioned, um, I was pretty much personally adamantly against this project initially. But as I dug down deeper and spoke with as many people as I could, um, I too have come to a conclusion that with the other um, the D cell lanes not being as critical an issue as once thought by TV, DPW, uh, the interior sidewalks personally are not a big issue to me, those are up to the private owners. If they want them, they pay for them, will never have to pay for them. Um, the street width was a big issue, but I did not learn until tonight that a hundred yards of that will be twenty-four feet, which is the standard. So I appreciate that and uh, it is some consolation that BNS will keep an eye on this permitting as it goes forward. And I would encourage um, Mr. Rutherford to do a good faith effort to uh, do the lanes and see what can become of that. And based on those uh, those thoughts, I'd vote aye.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Councillor Brown, aye.
Councillor Carlina?
Councillor Carlino, aye.
Councillor Delk?
Councillor Delk, yea.
Councillor Ethan Evans?
Based on also uh, what Councillor Boots had said and uh, testimony tonight and what I had brought up about the XL D cell lanes with the previous subdivisions and um, based on Councillor Mascary and hopefully the ongoing discussions that will be happening with regards to those, I will be voting yea.
Thank you. Councillor Jared Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Graves?
Councillor Graves, yes.
Councillor Gray?
No.
Councillor Hart?
Councillor Hart, aye.
Councillor Jackson?
Ca- Councillor Jackson, no.
Councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones, I will be voting aye, because I think the residents' voices need to be heard. Thank you.
Councillor Larison?
Councillor Larison, nay.
Councillor Lewis? Councillor Lewis? Councillor Mascary?
Councillor Mascary, aye.
Councillor McCormick?
Councillor McCormick, um, I just wanted to, I guess, thank all of us for the time that we spent tonight uh, going through the democratic process and listening to both sides. I think this is important and something that we make sure that we keep as a foundation. Um, I will be voting aye.
Thank you. Councillor Maury?
Uh, aye, thank you.
Councillor Oliver?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, to, to the President, um, are we involved on something that's gotten amendment to it, but an amendment is not being introduced? I'm hearing a discussion about this proposal before us that uh, it came back with a no recommendation. And discussion has been presented, the narrative has been a good faith effort. We're gonna amend it, but we, there's no amendment been offered. And to vote, I feel that this is a dangerous precedent by those that come before us with a good faith effort, they claim. I'm sure that was presented to the board, they refused to go along with that good faith effort. And I'm gonna go with the recommendation that it be turned down. And I think this is very, very dangerous for us to be voting on an amendment that has not been introduced.
Point of order.
Oh, the good faith effort.
Present point of order.
Allow me to finish.
Uh, finish.
Mi- Mr. President, I, I yield to the gentleman's point of order, I vote no.
Thank you. Councillor Osley?
I vote aye.
Councillor Potts?
Councillor Potts, aye.
Councillor Ray?
Councillor Ray, aye.
Councillor Robinson?
Councillor Robinson, nay.
Councillor Lewis?
Lewis, nay.
Thank you, Mr. President, that would be seven, oh, eighteen, yea, seven, nay.
Thank you very much. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business, there is no business under special orders, adoption. There's no business under special orders, service at District Councils. There is no business under new business, and so the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The documented agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President?
The chair recognizes Councillor Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following adjournment, motion for adjournment by Councillor Adamson and Osley in memory of Brian Onseka, by Councillor Osley in memory of Nancy Holman Johnson, by Councillor Mascary in memory of Sergeant Robert Hatch. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the fe- support of fellow councillors, I further request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of the body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising this action.